Good morning, everyone. Welcome, counsel, and welcome to those who are here to listen to what is likely our last budget meeting, she says hopefully. Catherine, I give this to you.
Wonderful, thank you. Good morning. We are pleased to start the day with the announcement from the weekend. The Tree Peace Organization has donated $1,000 to the town for our tree fund. Lovely event this weekend if you were able to go to Arbor Day.
If I may, the money came from the Elks. So it's through Tree Peace, from the Elks.
Well, Tree Peace had to go to the Elks in the question.
Right. Thank you. Credit to all. Very, very nice donation to the town. And also, at your place for your coffee or water this morning, they have donated coasters made out of the oak wood. So we're grateful. It was a wonderful event, and we had simultaneously the pickleball tournament, and if any of you were able to attend, but the largest tournament Oak Island has ever hosted. Very successful. Great kudos to Paul and the Parks and Rec Department in pulling all of that off. And I'm fortunate to be able to announce that the winner of the tournament in their age category was our very own Chief Morris.
Yes.
So we are very, very proud of him. It was a great weekend, so I hope you all got to get out and enjoy.
Not a competitor in his body.
Yeah. He's great. Okay, you should have the agenda for today in front of you. Lisa has the official agenda, and then I have the detailed agenda. That one's coming around. Of course, this is flexible. This is hopefully the final day, but we want to take plenty of time to make sure all of your questions and concerns are addressed as we've been through all the departments. These are the additional non-departmental type items, and certainly want to save plenty of time for the end to go through strategic plan, any final revisions you'd like to see on that, and the budget prioritization. As you know, we went through all the departments. There were some requests that were unable to be funded at this time, but we do feel that there's some flexibility available, so we want to make sure we hear your prioritization of that, that if there is an opportunity for us to put any of those requests back as we finalize, we'll save that for the very end, when we'll be able to have that exercise and go through that. And Helen's prepared the list of the major reductions that are for you to be able to go through today. Fire fee and...
Well, we have one additional meeting to deal with the outside agency request, since that application period is still open.
So we will be presenting the budget to you May 13th, and that's where you will see the final recommendations from the outside agencies. You'll have plenty of opportunity after that to give us feedback and make any changes. We also have the public hearing, that they may have some comments, that we want to make sure that those are heard and incorporated if necessary, and we won't take a final vote until June. So if at any point along that way, council feels we need an additional meeting on that, I'll be happy to accommodate.
So the first time we'll see your final draft is at the town council meeting?
Yes, always.
Won't get it two, or three, or four days in advance?
Not usually. That's the recommended budget. And then you have the entire month, including the special public hearing, to make any final adjustments. But we're going through most of it today. Hopefully, we can get most of that accomplished by the end of the day, and I'm happy to have additional meetings and decide if we need to. Several of you have asked for another copy of the strategic plan, it's before you, and Rose is printing out what was passed out at some point earlier, was the attempt to prioritize each of the items on the strategic plan, so it's kind of the second level of it, where we did the dot exercise. So the results of that are in front of you now as well. I do have on the agenda the fire department, and I put them first so they can come talk to you and then leave and get back to their work, if that is okay. I'd like to call Chief Price up now. So as you know, this is one of the largest changes, very important topic for the budget. We've had, what, three conversations on it now? This will be number four, but I think that's appropriate. We'll take as many as we need to make sure we're comfortable and we've addressed any of your concerns. The calculator was sent to you last Friday. I hope you've had a chance to play with that. It's very helpful, I think, to really see what it means and how it shakes out. And so, Chief Price, I'll turn it right over to you.
Sure. How are y'all doing this morning? So yes, as Catherine was saying, we've had quite a few meetings and discussions on this with y'all, and Helen and Catherine and I have had countless meetings about this, trying to make sure that, taking a deep dive into this and making sure that things are right. So I put together a little presentation to kind of give you some final information on what we're recommending. As I started out, I wanted to make sure that it has been said numerous times, that this is not in addition to the fire fee, this is a replacement funding model for the fire service. And so we'll talk about a current rate conversion of what the fire fee equals to in cents. We'll talk about what the current rate of the general fund provides to the fire department. We will have a brief discussion on what the general fund rate is and how it affects that, and then recommend the fire tax rate and general fund rate as far as my presentation goes. Of course, that recommendation comes from y'all, we're just trying to give some guidance. Our projected fire fees for '25-'26 is $2,883,060 at the 98% collection rate. That gives us the 2.825. So that equals in what a fire tax rate would be, four cents. And so that's key to remember, is basically four cents is what the fire fee would equal to. Using the '25-'26 anticipated budgets, budget number, with the fire fee plus the general fund contribution to the existing budget as it stands with no expansions, the general fund contribution, that would be three cents. And so this is a breakdown. If our general fund is 16 cents, we have 10 cents, basically the operating revenue, three cents towards the fire service, three cents toward the sand tax, that's your 16 cents. And then the equivalent fire fee of four cents gives you a total basic rate of 20 cents per hundred. I'll stop there if there's any questions on that slide. We tried to break it out very clear of what the rates are and where they go. I think that's very crucial to make sure that's 10, 3, 3, and the equivalent of the fire fee being the four cents. And so if we implement the fire tax, which is, you know, what's recommended, it cleans things up a little bit. You have the 10 cent, the general fund, this is the starting point. And when I say starting point, we're basically saying this is where we start, and if council decides to add things to the budget, then of course, things elevate from there. But the starting point being 10 cents with 3 cent on the sand tax, and the fire tax would be 7 cents, equalling the 20 cents with no expansions. Any questions? And the last slide, what I did, because we had talked about staffing and everything else, is 7, 7 and 1/2, and 8 cents being the three additional and the six additional, just to give you an idea. So I'd be glad to back up, discuss anything. I took an extremely deep dive and got way deep in the weeds on my budget to make sure that we met that 7 cents with what we were needing this year. Even Friday afternoon, I came back, and what I'd originally presented Catherine, I said, "Give it back." I was changing numbers Friday, making sure that we're on target for where we need to be. And so that's, including things where I, we actually went through and had a lot of discussions in prioritizing some stuff. It's like, you know, I'd asked for the new admin truck that was cut. I was able to actually add that back in to keep the rate the same by moving some other things around. And so we feel good about that. And so really, the only plus pluses in this year would be if you did award me some staffing.
So Catherine and Chief, I have a question. I appreciate the calculator. I ran my numbers for both a 7 percent and a 7 cent and a 7 and 1/2 cent fire tax. The amount of money out of my pocket went down.
Okay.
For the 8 cent, it went up a little bit. My question is, if we don't implement the fire tax above 7 cents, and we still need to get you at least three positions, what does that mean on the ad valorem side? How much of an increase would that take to get those three positions?
It would, it basically equals the same. It's because we're figuring fire tax at what the ad valorem rate is with the 682.
Which is that if we don't go to the fire tax, then it would be a tax increase.
Yeah, half a cent at least.
Yeah, up to a penny depending on equipment necessary.
Okay, because a penny increase on the ad valorem side is going to cost me more than double what the 8 cent fire tax is going to cost me.
Got you.
I'd like to run that and see that.
Yeah, we can run that and see.
So I fully support the fire tax, and I'm even willing to support it up to 8 cents.
Are there other concerns?
With the fire tax, you'd be lowering the ad valorem tax.
That's correct. That's why she would see that, taking into account it looking like, remember, he showed really it's a 20 cent feel of cost to the consumer, to our citizens. But they don't see that on their taxes. They see the tax rate, but they do need to realize that fire fee is in there. So it may feel different because it's not counted as tax, but it's all based on the ad valorem, and it's all the same amount. So if we didn't lower the ad valorem property tax rate, then that's why you're seeing an increase to the 1 cent. It's not factoring in that reduction.
That's right.
But your out-of-pocket would actually be the same, because you'd have to add back in the fire fee that is actually on your bill. I think I just confused more.
I think the net-net is, this view is as close to neutral as we can get, exactly like the exercise we did when the county did valuations a couple of years ago, and we got to 16 cent, 13 and 3. It wasn't perfect, but it was as close to neutral as we could get. Some people paid a few dollars more, some people paid a few dollars less. So we're in the exact same situation right now. In this first year of transition, your goal, or my goal, would be to show taxpayers that we're working hard to get to a neutral impact in year one, because we're setting up a whole new tax structure, and it may impact the budget the following year, depending on growth. I know we're seeing growth slow down a little bit, but the question is, how long is that going to last? You know, things are turning around already in the marketplace, and so we could see growth return to our traditional levels, but you know, that's to be determined. So I see year one as let's figure out this transition as a neutral position as possible, and then, you know, we can see what the growth brings and plan for next year's budget and have the same conversation again. But we're having the conversation based on a fire tax rate, not fire services fees, if that makes sense.
So if you're suggesting we try to be as neutral as possible this year, then are you not advocating for providing Chief with additional staff?
I am not advocating for additional staff this year. I say we go one more year, business as usual, especially since we're seeing a slower growth rate. So there's an expectation that there may be less demand for services of the town in general, not specifically public safety, but in general, we may see less demand for services. It's always flipping the coin, right? You look at growth projections and you say, can we make it forward, business as usual, and keep the tax rate where we are? Or do we need to anticipate, you know, unexpected events, which that's very difficult to do?
Because last year, he asked for six personnel, and we said, that's a stretch. Can you, if we can give you three, can you try to make that work for a year? And now here we are again, and now we're saying, oops, sorry, we should have just told you last year you weren't going to get any more personnel.
If I may interject, and I understand exactly what you're saying, but the positions that we're asking for and the need that we've identified is to basically catch us up, is to provide the level of service that we're providing this year and this past year with the appropriate amount of people. And yes, if we don't experience much growth next year, we still need these requested positions just to catch up with what we're doing currently. As I said in the previous presentation, you know, we, between sickness and injuries and stuff like that, we've been short-staffed. Where we're full is all our positions are full. I've got, as of yesterday, two people now out on injured reserve, I guess you could call it. One's got to have knee surgery, one's got to have shoulder surgery, and so we're running short every day because of that minimal staffing, is we're being very minimalistic on staffing. And it puts us in a tremendous stretch, especially with the level of service that we've been providing to the citizens on the beach with the ocean rescue part of it. That takes one person off the truck each day, so if we're already short-staffed, we reduce one more at least for eight hours during the day, putting people on the beach, making sure with the part timers that we were able to consolidate with the BSU and the ORU. So since I've been here, and y'all have been very generous and supportive of us, and we have been in a huge catch-up phase, and we've talked about that. And this, as I said last, kind of finishes out our catch-up with the six. And then from here forward, we look to the expansion of mainland services and other things. And so I just want to make sure it's very clear that we're not asking for staff due to anticipated growth and anticipated increase in calls. We're looking for the staff to catch up for what we're doing and providing this level of service. Mayor, you and I had this conversation, and I'll be the first to admit, we have set a level of service that we feel is very appropriate for this town, and provides a good safety coverage between fire EMS and the beach. And I've set that level of service pretty high, and I think it's very appropriate. And a lot of our meetings, we talk about why we had this many fires, why we do this, and it's always come up. You remember the meeting we had, "How's your staffing?" And it's something we've been working on this whole time. And I know I'm harping on that part of it, but that is so crucial, especially for Chief Silens and I, because we do a lot of covering when we're short-staffed. And so while I do appreciate and understand your point, Mr. Martin, it's, we're doing a whole lot with a few, and just wanted to push that out there, not trying to make a sales pitch or back y'all in a corner, but that's just the fact, is that we're, if I had my little duck, I'd set him back up here.
And I do want to make sure that we have been trying to get him the additional command. He had a part-time last year. What's included is making that position a full-time, so there is that addition.
Yes, and he has been tremendously valuable in spreading the responsibilities and duties that Chief Silens and I have, where we can focus on the different areas. And I focus on the town. I face the town and focus with y'all and make sure everything's good, and take care of that end of the administration part. Chief Silens takes care of the day-to-day global operations and all of the training that we do, which y'all know is tremendous. And then Chief Wagner is taking care of the special services, which is the ocean rescue beach services. He also takes care of all of the logistics, all of the vehicle. He aligns all of that, and he works very hard. And so everyone has their lane, and it's still very tasking. So just wanted to throw it out. Bob, I think you had a question?
Yeah, I had a number of questions, which I had sent to Catherine. So I ran the scenario in my house, I'm 1,000 to 2,000, and, you know, had a sizable jump in valuation, but at 7%, that's a 6% total outlay increase for me. At 7 and 1/2%, it's a 9% outlay increase, and at 8%, it's 11%. If I add stormwater in there, that potential increase, you know, we're looking at 12%, 14% possibly to get to 8% fire tax. So a question for you, in the spreadsheet you have, that really cool one that you have in front of you, where you had different scenarios, right? You looked at all the square footage. Did you see any outliers in there, like 1,000 to 2,000 square foot? Was that one that was kind of an outlier, where they would tend to see increases?
So the outliers, and we talked about this before, is that if you had a small house on a valuable piece of property, you could potentially see a increase. Whereas if you had a 3,000 square foot house on the beachfront, you might break even. It just depends the size versus the value and proportion. And so while that does fluctuate, 1,000 square foot house that might sit on the inner coastal where the lot, the property and everything is very valuable, you could see a small increase. I think I did an example of Mr. Martin's house, you know, it's on the inner coastal, and he would see an increase because of the property value versus the square footage. And so it does create an equality, though, with that square footage, whereas, as I talked about last time, if you had a 2,000 square foot house on the beach, that's $1.8 million. Then a 2,000 square foot house in the wooded area, that's $600,000. Right now, they're paying the same fee, and the risk is much greater up here, so yes.
So how about vacant lots? I was trying to, I couldn't figure that out on this spreadsheet. How do we, what's the, the fire fee, how is that calculated for vacant lots?
So in vacant lots, it depends on, I think there's a flat, and I actually, just yesterday, updated the calculator and included commercial properties in it. Vacant lots are another outlier. And so where a vacant lot, I think I used an example in Pine Forest. They have a vacant lot that's for sale. The fire fee is 20 bucks. That would elevate to, I think, $85, based on the property value of what that lot would And that's per year.
And that's a great example to see the difference. Not advocating one way or the other, you can see it very clearly on a vacant lot, because they have no square footage, therefore, there are very little fire fee. But if you base it on your ad valorem tax value of the property as a whole, and there's still no building on it, it goes up.
So the roughly 15% of our undeveloped lots on Oak Island, and they're going to see a very sizable increase on the fire tax?
Based on a single lot that I used, it would be $60 a year, yes, so $5 a month.
That was Pine Forest.
That was Pine Forest. If we looked at a vacant lot here on the island, which we did, I think it was about $110-ish increase, about 10 bucks a month, yes.
So for a $250,000 lot?
That's what we ran.
Yeah.
Okay, and how about commercial properties?
So like I said, I put that, I added that calculator, Catherine and I were talking about that, so commercial properties, and it varies. Some of your larger, like, I used, for example, there was a grocery store on the island that is 29,000 and some square foot, and the property value is like $8.9 million or something like that. They did see an increase of about $734 a year, because they fell right below that $30,000 threshold of what the fire fee was. Now, if you did a smaller business, I think I actually used the Tipsy Tuna for that, and they actually saw a decrease, because it was a smaller building, the value wasn't as high, and so they saw a small increase. So it is directly reflected, just like in the residential properties, with the commercial properties, based on square footage versus the value.
So for properties that are more than six miles from a fire station, we have the ability to charge, do we charge additional fire fees for that, or is the fire fee locked in?
Anything outside of our, we, if I remember right, and Chief Silens, correct me if I'm wrong on this, we don't have any properties outside of the six mile. We do have properties within, between the five and six mile area up in the Pine Forest, which is currently in that split rating. And we have worked diligently to try to rectify that, and when I can make that announcement, I will. I'm hoping that we have rectified some of that. But the fire fee, basically, if you're looking between that five and six mile, they're still charged a fire fee for it. Fire tax, it would be the same thing.
The fire fee should not change regardless of where the house is. It all depends on which fire district it's in.
Right.
So we set our fire fees around 100%, so anything inside of our fire district is that same fire fee regardless.
Right.
The only thing that would change is the highest.
Yes.
See, for the, like Pine Forest apartments, the high-density apartments, so would that be a significant increase in fire tax from fire fee?
So it really depends, because it gets really muddy when you start looking at those, is that the apartments, if they're based on square footage for the entire apartment, that would be, you know, based on one thing, whether it's how many square foot in each unit versus what the value of that unit is. And so it really gets down to, if you've got areas that have townhomes, like individual units that you own, it goes property value. If you're renting, it's more based on the entire structure, just like the ad valorem taxes, that they pass the taxes along to the renter. I'm sure the fire fee's done the same way.
Can you go back one chart?
Right there.
No, maybe another one.
Okay, right there.
Yep, here we go. So you're assuming one penny generates roughly $700,000 in tax revenue?
682.
Yep, very close.
Yes, sir.
And so your 4 cent is actually a little low with the...
414.
Yep. And then...
Rounded, yes.
3 cents on the general fund is closer to reality, if I'm doing my math correctly.
.01, .0414, .0298.
Yep. My brain without coffee doesn't go to that many decimals.
500. Yeah, you're right. It's very rounded, really close, but yeah. As we're every day still...
And just like you said, we're doing our best to keep it and get the rounded number so that way, because, yeah, those...
Keep it simple.
Yes.
And then are we factoring in a 1% growth for this upcoming fiscal year, or 1 and 1/2, or 2?
1 and 1/2.
We're doing 1 and 1/2.
Yep.
Okay.
And we're going to hope for every bit of it.
Because we typically budget for 2% growth.
Yes, and we are not seeing that.
So 1 and 1/2, what's the growth revenue projection? Is that factored into all of the budget goals?
682 plus 1/2 of 682, yeah.
Yeah.
That is correct.
Is that factored in already?
Do, yes, sir. We do have revenues. I can tell you the exact number.
And when I read my numbers, it's, Catherine and I talked about this, I ran it all on the 682 number. And that's, as I said before, and you called me out on that once before, is my number's a little different. As I've been preparing this, and I've been working on this for a while, is I went from one set of numbers to last year's numbers, and then we got this year's numbers, and so I've been updating my stuff. I think this is budget number 14 that I've done, in trying to get this right for y'all. So I mean, it's really important to me, and I know it's really important for y'all, I want to make sure this is right. I will just throw in there also is, this spreadsheet I created right here with fire tax, I've been able to do projections all the way up to, it's kind of small, 34, 35, using 1% assumption on revenue increases, 3% assumptions on expenditure increases. And you know, once we get down and pay for... And, you know, once we get down and pay for some capital items, the tax goes down some. We build a station and add some more people, it goes up some. So just for examples, if we started with the six, Terry, you know, we'd be at that eight cents. And from there, once we paid for a couple of things, like a couple of trucks, it would drop back down to about seven and a half. And then when we add back to stations and building, I actually called and got some figures on that, it would go up to maybe, say, like nine point two, nine point three. And so that doesn't include any reevaluations or any outside growth other than that one percent. If we saw a two or three percent growth, of course, that number would go down. If we had a reevaluation between now and then, of course, that number would reset. We'd be right back in the same boat, trying to figure out what the neutral rate would be and go from there. And so that's what's beautiful about the, using the fire tax, is being able to clarify and create assumptions for future growth and future planning. Is in thirty-four, thirty-five, as it stood, if we were to do the six and hire fifteen, sixteen people and build a fire station, well, yeah, we'd be at that ten cent mark. But I can tell you that without any reevaluations or one percent growth. That, that makes it really nice for us, and it's very transparent, that we can say, this is what we're looking at, this is where we're headed. This is what we can do, or this is what we can't do in the future, based on the revenues.
So I think what the fire, I'm sorry.
If I may?
You may.
Thank you, sir. We're the only county in the, in the state still using the fire tax. So it's obvious to...
Fire fee.
Fire fee, yes.
So it's obvious to me that the days of the fire fees are behind us, and it's inevitable that we go to a fire tax. So now we have to figure out what we're going to do with the fire tax. I'm always hesitant to reach into residents and taxpayers' billfold and ask for money. You have to show them the return on the investment, have to show them that it's necessary, and it has, has to be. But then I say, with progress comes growth, and with growth comes expenses. And I think it's inevitable that we, we go to the fire tax. And Terry brought up the percentages and the numbers. I came in here this morning to say, I think we need to go to seven and a half cents. Last year, you asked for more people. We gave you half of what you asked for, said no to some other stuff. You came in here and showed us that we're like a duck paddling as crazy as we can. We're making it work, but golly, it's difficult. Everybody in town brags on the fire department because it's such a good job you do. But then when we have an opportunity to help you, we kind of say, no, we don't want to go down that road yet. Keep, keep paddling crazy. This is a fair distribution on who pays what, and it's far more equitable. The only thing I want to point out is, when you start raising taxes, you rarely lower taxes. So I came, I came prepared to go to seven and a half cents very carefully. That's my thoughts.
Well, I think, as is the case in all budgets, budgets are about choices. So we have not made choices yet, we're looking at options. And I concur with, I think, everyone at the table that the fire tax is the wave of the future. We're behind the curve. Question is where to set it. And there are some competing notions here. One is that our commitment, which we've honored for the last seven years, not to have a tax increase. We've come very close. We've increased fees, obviously, but, so that was the goal of this budget. There are still decisions to be made about what's in it, what's not in it. And then there's the model that we use. Mark alluded to this. During the reevaluate, where there's a lot of confusion and a lot of anxiety, we tried to preserve net neutral as a design. Our citizens are familiar with that. So there's an argument to be at seven and then seven and a half next year. Seven, they'll understand. It's an offset, right? This tax goes up, but ad valorem goes down, and we can explain that. I'd like to see the overall budget before we make any final decisions of fees, right? Versus taxes, versus what services are going to be expanded. You look at our budget, police and fire, in terms of service, eat almost fifty percent of it. So what about wastewater? What about the other services? Is fire the priority? Perhaps it is, but I'd need to see that laid out, at the point where then we get to make choices. We don't have to agree, we just need a majority, right? But hopefully, we get a unanimous council saying, fire is so important, we're going to raise the tax, we're going to take that risk, we're going to, or the alternative, we're honoring no tax increase, we're converting net neutral, and we'll deal with it going forward. So there are some real choices here. We'll see what they are, right?
We'll wrap up your day doing exactly that.
I'm for it.
I want you to see it all before you comfortable making any...
I mean, I can't make a decision until it's laid out that way.
I just want him to have every additional opportunity. Now you've seen the calculator. He's by far the expert in these numbers. But any additional questions about the fire fee itself or about some of the other items in Chief's budget?
The updated calculator, if you could get that sent out to us, as in vacant lots, commercial properties.
So if you want me to include the vacant lots, that'll have to be a third calculator I add to it.
Okay.
Um, I can work on that today. I did the commercial part, and I'll, I'll work on the third one.
Okay, go ahead and send it directly.
Okay, I'll send it, that'll be fine.
Thank you.
And Catherine, for you, so thirteen cents, do you feel, no, I'm sorry, do you think that thirteen cents would be sufficient for you for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget?
As you've seen these whole last couple of weeks, yes, we can make that work. However, there are things that do not get included. There are no expansions. There are some capital. It does not address your recreation center, for instance. So can we get by? Yes, absolutely. There was no reduction in our service providing to the citizens at that level. But there's no expansions. So that's the decision before us.
So staying on point with fire fee versus fire tax, everyone's spoken, so I'll share my thoughts. Fire fee versus fire tax is a sound business decision. There's, we're, we're trying to approximate using fire fees, where fire tax gives us more concrete ability to do the projections that the chief has done. With fire fee, it's a lot, it's kind of a waffle. I mean, you can, you can guess, you can make smart guesses, but you can't do the assumptions that the chief talks about in terms of budget projection. And whether or not taxes go up or down is a function of council. So if they do go up, quite frankly, it's in your hands as to whether they go down. So to say that taxes rarely go down, well, that's in your hands, whether they go up or down. So they can go down. It takes the resolve of a council to make those decisions as they see fit. Relative to whether or not we give the chief the added staff that he's asked for, I build on your commentary that we told him, hang on, help is coming, last year. We have all said in different forms over these last months, we talk about retention of staff. I've heard each and every one of you talk about the ability to retain staff. Burning them out is not the way to retain staff. Forcing people to work overtime shifts, forcing people to fill in when you've got ill and injured firefighters to provide the same level of service. There are no excuses here. When someone calls nine-one-one and our fire and/or police are dispatched, quite frankly, you can't say, well, someone was out sick that day. You know, you might get by with that in some other service that we provided, but there, there just aren't any excuses. And the quickest way to either decrease motivation for an employee, I mean, think about, you've all been in positions in the work that you've done where someone leaves and that position is not filled, and everyone else has to take up the slack. So I ask you to remember how you felt in having to take up that slack over extended periods of time with no increase in pay. So it will, it will erode motivation of employees, and ultimately, when they've had their fill, they leave. And they go someplace else where the expectations are less reasonable. So in your deliberations, I just ask you to keep that in mind. As it relates to retaining staff, burning them out is not the way to do that.
Catherine, back to you. Thank you very much. Any additional questions for Chief? I'm going to let him go.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for all your research.
Thank you. Thank you for your considerations and support, that's for sure.
Okay. That's a lot, but we're trying to keep that one straight. So as you're talking about how this impacts the citizens, on your agenda, I'll go back to that very quickly if I can, Mike, the agenda for the day. You have that in front of you as well. I'm trying to do that for the public watching. The additional impact, as we've been talking about so far, to our citizens is in stormwater and solid waste. So just, I'm trying to keep all of those changes at the forefront of the discussion today. The fire fee, fire tax, of course, would, they would feel an impact. And the stormwater fund is the only area that we're recommending a significant fee change. We ran the numbers after our discussion last time for stormwater, and we would recommend going from seven dollars a month to ten dollars a month to be able to accomplish all of the needs that were requested. That was four positions total. However, if you wanted to do something less than a seven to ten, we could do it with a reduction of those four additional positions. But again, these are the prioritizations we can get to at the end of the day. I'm just putting all of these impacts before you again. The solid waste fund was a minor increase in the fees recommended. And I say minor because we are making sure that we're passing on directly the cost that we're incurring to have the contracted services provide the trash and recycling. And that primarily impacted the larger beach homes that have rentals and have to have multiple trashcans and multiple pickups. Those fees had gone up in our GFL contract, and we would just be passing those along. But again, the vast majority of the residents would not see any increase in their solid waste fees at all.
So we're simply charging them what we're being charged by GFL?
Passing it.
Passing it through.
That, that contract does have regular incremental percentage increases in the contract, and we could only absorb them for the last few years. We cannot absorb those increases anymore. So it would just be passing them along. So those are the two?
I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm going to put you on the spot.
Okay.
So we're talking about potentially refinancing our stormwater debt.
Wastewater.
Wastewater debt. Sorry, still the question applies. If we are able to realize a savings through refinancing, is that something that can potentially be passed along to the customer?
No.
Okay.
We need every bit of that so that we do not have an increase in the wastewater rates.
Okay.
Good question. Well, what we are looking at, and I will say we haven't done the deep dive yet, the sewer assessment fund and the sewer district fee, the assessment fund is, is done. That was the ten years, and that is complete. But the district fee is still the six hundred and one dollars a year. We are trying to reduce that to six hundred. I know that was a commitment by councils in the past that we continue to evaluate and see where we can decrease because of the sewer rate increase we received from Brunswick County last year. We were not able to do it last year. However, we're, we're hopeful we can have a small reduction in that.
Decrease it from what to what?
From six-oh-one in some sense to six hundred. It's not, not significant, but again, it depends on that bond refunding. We're in the process of doing that this week. And if that turns out even better than we anticipated, we might be able to reduce that more. So not in the direct rates, but in that sewer assessment is where we would target.
Yeah, that was my...
Did I answer your question?
That was my question.
Perfect.
Catherine, for the...
There was a significant reduction in that assessment probably four or five years ago. We were at like eight forty-one, and we were able to go to six oh-one. So that was a pretty large reduction. As we get near to the end of term, it's going to be more difficult to make those kind of significant moves with the, with the billing. So any, any movement at all to decrease it would help. But I think the other side of that, that's reciprocal, is the refinancing helps prevent us from increasing fees. So that's kind of, even though it's not a direct correlation to reducing the, the taxpayer's requirement, it is somewhat of a benefit because they're not going to be faced with a higher monthly fee. So, but even that is going to be somewhat small, right? We're not going to be able to, to do any significant movement there. And so the good news is, we are approaching, we're getting closer to that end of term on, on some of these bonds. So there is a light at the end of the tunnel.
Catherine, the four additional positions in stormwater, could you remind us again what that breakdown is?
Well, one was requested in Matt's area. That is a permit-related position to assist them in meeting our MS4 permit requirements of inspections. The other three were in public works for the maintenance, being able to keep up with required maintenance.
And the increase from seven dollars, a proposed increase from seven to ten, would that be able to absorb all four positions?
Yes.
What do the citizens, besides more people working, what do the citizens get for that three cent increase? What do those additional people bring to the table?
We will meet the terms of our required permitting so that the entire stormwater program doesn't get taken away from the town.
I can appreciate that, but...
They would also get additional maintenance of the ditches, the major projects we will be able to start to plan for and tackle. We're, we're GIS mapping all of our infrastructure right now. Then we can really, after this, after the master plan, we can really start attacking where we have stormwater problems. Fixing broken pipes, fixing culverts, fixing underneath the driveways, as Matt and Andy were talking about, fixing the drainage ditches that have not been maintained as we'd like to. So it's a higher level of service, for sure.
On somebody on, say, sixty-sixth Street who has water standing in their yard, we haven't done holdup for you in the past at seven dollars. Now we want to charge you ten dollars, we need to tell them help's on the way.
It's going to take some time. It's not going to be instant.
Stormwater, one, one last question. Are we hurting ourselves when our stormwater director is also our tree director?
I think that does put a lot of pressure. I would...
With any of these four hires?
I would prefer that, that stormwater could focus on stormwater more.
Is that in, is that on the table for this year?
That is in part of our Parks and Rec discussion, where frequently in cities or towns, you might see that urban forestry a part of a parks area. So that is, that is in discussion. Thank you. Okay. Very comfortable with the stormwater and solid waste fee?
Comfortable with it, Catherine. I think at some point, probably post this budget, we should have a discussion about the, I'll call it the architecture of future budgets, because we continue to operate with this massive debt, which was incurred by the council's past. We've had a run-up of growth. We've tried to be fiscally very conservative, and now we're looking at an uncertain environment. We probably need a couple of scenarios. Like, we're continuing to have to expand services. We may not have the same level of growth we've had. We may need to approach the budget as... We may need to approach the budget assumption a different way. For example, in budget 2027, we're gonna need a 3 to 4 cent tax increase because we know we're gonna need these infrastructure improvements. We know we're gonna need expansion of this service. Fire law filing and so on. I mean, the way we have done this has worked, but the circumstances are changing. That's what I sense. I'm just looking at the last budget. We hired nine additional people. So, yeah, fire still needs more. That's still not right. So that's a problem that we inherited. But now that we're coming to the end of that sort of problem, I think the way we envision future budgets, it's worth thinking about it collectively. So, in my mind, I would have multiple scenarios because we just don't know. But I don't think we'll be able to do this any longer. The public may not have appreciated it, but I know what, what kind of thinking and work went into it. We haven't had a tax increase in eight years. We have some major service areas that need to expand. We have projects that need to be undertaken. So we've gotta get a different architecture. I'll leave that for council next, but it's got to be there. We're thinking about it. Because you can't back into it. Can't afford to, right?
So I think part of that, and I applaud you, Catherine, and the administration, is having a three-year strategic outlook. So, thinking out, I mean, I agree with you, John, I'm building on what you're saying, not competing with it. So I think that is absolutely critical that we continue to look forward as opposed from year to year, which is a major change that we've accomplished this year with a 25-27 budget. And next year, we'll be looking out even further to 2028. But Catherine, my question is whether this council has a full grasp on where our income comes from, right? So what does that landscape look like? Where do all of the funds that, that are incoming to Oak Island? So we, we see the deficit, but we don't really have a snapshot of where everything comes from other than what you've presented generally. And we haven't had the discussion about how to perhaps grow. How do we grow that? Do we invest in commercial? Do we invest in developing lands that are not yet developed in a way that's responsible and environmentally sensitive? So I think as much as we look at, and it's much easier to talk about the expenditure side of the house, we haven't really had discussions in my memory of how we grow the, the income side because that's the yin and the yang of the budget.
Perfect. I did include that on today's discussion. It's a revenue and fee schedule conversation that I read your mind. Hopefully, we'll be able to address that. I have printed out all of the general fund revenues for you, so you can dig into those numbers, and then we can have that high-level discussion. You wanna move to revenues now, or are you comfortable waiting till that is on the agenda? What's your preference, since you opened that door so nicely? Do we wanna go into revenues? I'm fine.
It's down here as number five. I can wait.
Yeah. I think we'll just skip over.
Okay.
Please.
Good, thank you. I just wanted to talk about the Beach Nourishment Fund and how that relates to the Room Occupancy Funds. Again, just to make sure everybody's comfortable and aware of how that works here. A different type of revenue, but a little bit to your point, Mayor. Part of our revenue is, well, of course, ad valorem property tax is the largest, and sales tax is the next largest. But this town benefits greatly from our visitors. The Room Occupancy Funds, we talked about this a little bit a couple of meetings ago. We receive a 3% and a 2% Room Occupancy Tax. Every time people come and visit our beautiful beaches, they are paying into that Room Occupancy Funds, which this council, and rightfully so, has always reserved for our beach nourishment projects, which hopefully, this year, we'll actually be able to use them. We were just talking about the bids, you know, at the beginning of this conversation several weeks ago. We talked about how Moffett Nichols is preparing to go out to rebid our beach nourishment project. They have done so. We've had the pre-bid conference. We still have until May 12th. So we won't know the exact numbers yet, but we're still predicting in that $30 million range. We're prepared for that. The Room Occupancy Tax Funds, they're all set up in separate funds. All of that money is transferred to the Beach Nourishment Fund, minus some of the funds that we, we do for beach services. I believe we have a $200 and some thousand dollar transfer that is covering some of the beach services, Dune Nourishment, some of the other eligible expenses. By and large, that has to be used for the beach nourishment or tourism-related services. So, that is what all that money has been tied up, waiting for this big project that hopefully we'll get some successful bids on the 12th, and we'll be able to do the sand project this winter. Because it is so large, we've been very hesitant to spend any of that until we see those numbers, of course. But assuming that they come back as we projected, you recall, I put a $5 million transfer in from the general fund, which was always built in the financial analysis of previous administrations, which has, has borne out very nicely. So here we are, and that $5 million transfer from the general fund's fund balance will be going into the beach nourishment to supplement the Room Occupancy Taxes, hopefully pay for this big project. So I just wanna pause there and make sure everybody's comfortable with that. We did not need to do that $5 million transfer from the general fund. The general fund would be even in much better shape. But this is the year we need to do that. But again, it, it's very much dependent on how these bids come out on the 12th. That'll be the day before the council meeting, so the, the recommended budget will already be off the press by then. But again, we have until June to make any of those final adjustments as necessary.
Are we continuing to solicit bids at the sand volume as we did in last year, where the bids were over budget, and we tried to pick a vendor and say, hey, at a reduced sand volume, can you come in, you know, at our projected budget need? And that vendor said, no, I can't. You know, if I adjust sand volumes, I'm still charging you the same amount of money. Are we bidding a lower volume of sand this time around?
Yes, and we adjusted the RFP with a lot of work from Moffett Nichols, along with our attorney, and made sure that it was simplified and clear so we don't end up with those same problems. Yes, it is a reduced sand volume, one in general. And two, because we know concretely now on the East End, we'll be able to do the 6.6 million and effectuate that volume of sand at the lower rate. Therefore, we don't need to cover the East End at all with this new sand nourishment project. But it does cover the West End.
Does the lower volume impact the initial profile that Moffett and Nichol designed?
It does slightly. It does.
But we have a new profile.
In anticipation of the timing such that, we would hope that the Corps of Engineers' nourishment federal beach project would culminate in, hopefully, a positive yes will be accepted in that program. Therefore, we will not have to do this again. So it's, we ended up at a seven-year, I think a six, seven-year timeframe. And hopefully, by then, there's enough time for the Corps to get theirs to the point of, we'll be a federal beach at that point. So we wouldn't have to do that again.
But the Army Corps of Engineers has yet to provide any projections on what a beach management program looks like under a smaller profile, under a different delivery mechanism as a federal beach. Where are those projections? Initially, they said they could have some early numbers to us in January of 2025. It's May, May 2025, a couple of days. And we still don't have any projections from them.
Nope, they said 27.
Yeah.
But they're also...
It's a seven-year project.
It's, it's a substantially large project. But they're, they're actually looking for different sand locations, which would also bring the cost down considerably if we're able to find something that's compatible at a much closer range. So I know that's what they're focused on right now.
So the initial beach nourishment project will be officially closed out in 2026?
Yes.
Like first quarter 2026?
That is the hope.
And then the Army Corps of Engineers are saying that they won't be able to provide projections on a beach management program until 2027? So that's a one-year gap?
So we'll just proceed accordingly?
Yeah.
No.
It's right.
No. Bill, I'm sorry. We, we would not proceed accordingly under a Moffett and Nichol design...
No, no, no.
Of, of $36 million.
I agree.
What if it's every seven years?
But we will set...
Be well within that.
Well, and again, I would say no. That's my concern. I, my, my prediction is that the Army Corps of Engineer as a federal beach, that's a cost-sharing management program. I would say that our cost is reduced by maybe as much as 50%. So instead of $36 million every six years, we may be faced with only 18 million.
Correct.
At 18 million every six years, guess what happens? We don't need the sand tax anymore. Residents can stop paying 3 cent per hundred for sand tax. Tourism will fund the beach management, and that's how it should be.
That's the goal.
We should encourage tourism. We should do things that benefit tourism because you're gonna see things like sales tax and occupancy tax and what its projections can be. I say, you know, we should be focused on an architecture, as John puts it, that eliminates the sand tax from the residents, right?
That, I'm in agreement.
That's the big picture here. But that big picture is completely dependent upon a new plan, something different than what we've been shown by Moffett and Nichol. It's dependent upon another provider under a different model, i.e. a federal beach cost-sharing program. That's...
So we're working on it.
It, it is completely dependent upon that. If we don't have that data till 2027, can we operate 2026 without a management program in place? Is the CRC gonna come back and have problems with that, right?
Well, we're operating on our existing one until such time as the Corps might change it.
Right, but as soon as they sign off, as soon as the engineering signs off on the new profile, we don't have a management program in place for the new profile. That's my concern.
So our commitment...
Can we go a year without a management program in place under a new profile?
Yes, is the short answer.
Because, because we don't need beach renourishment for another five or six years.
Based on erosion rate.
After we do the beach renourishment in January 26, December 25.
You're correct. Our beach management plan requires us to monitor erosion rates on a routine basis. And based on those erosion rates, which are calculated based on past history, to be about every five or six years. So, we're required by our beach management plan that the state has approved via CRC to maintain a certain level of, of beach. And based on, again, on history, that erosion rate is about five or every six years. And where every five years, the CRC comes back and evaluates all beach management plans. So we would have to, in this interim, would be preparing for that five-year review and update. So we would then present to the CRC. I guess the beach management plan got approved last year. So four years forward, we go before the CRC with our new beach management plan with existing data showing this is how we're gonna move forward. And hopefully, being part of a federal beach will be part of that. So we're looking, this is '05. So it'll probably 2010, 2011 is, depending on when that meeting occurs, is when we would go forward with our new plan, and we would then already know what the status is from the Army Corps of Engineers for a federal beach.
So then my question still is, that one-year gap, can we leverage the previous beach management program that was approved without a contract with an engineering firm? Or are we gonna, are we obligated by the CRC to maintain a contract with an engineering company for that one-year gap?
That is not part of the plan. Being able to collect data is the plan, to be able to provide the data. So there are, we would have to, without committing, we would have it today. We would have to look at others who potentially could manage those erosion rates, Catherine, if, if I'm on point here. If not, please correct me.
No, you're very much on point. I just wanna make sure we stay on budget topics for public meeting.
Yeah. Well, that, in my mind, that is a budget topic because we're, we're looking at establishing an architecture for the future on what is needed and how that implicates tax rates. So if, if we can at least conceptually put together a timeframe that shows completion of beach nourishment, we'll have this time to reflect on erosion rates. Maybe we RFP a new vendor just to do the data collection point. That might be a more affordable provider to do data collection. And then when we get to that federal beach status in 2027, now you can try to meet the architect, that you put together, the architecture you framed up, and start focusing on goals like reducing the sand tax to the taxpayers of Oak Island and having tourism fund the beach front 100%, right?
So I'm gonna, I would love to see the sand tax go away like everybody else. I think reality is, so $36 million beach nourishment plan today, six years from now is not $36 million. It's $52 million. And then 60 years after that, it's not $52 million. It's $73 million. So I would love to project the sand tax going away. I think that we're setting ourselves up for failure if we begin to put together that type of mindset that it's going to go away. It'd be great if it happens, and maybe inflation is, we're not gonna continue to see the sand tax increases, but I suspect we will. And I don't know if increase, if future occupancy taxes would be sufficient to offset those increases.
But if we get to the point where the Army Corps designates us as a federal beach, at that point, we don't need the sand tax.
I would say that's a goal that should be considered by council at that time. Because to Bob's point, those projections, while they could be somewhat accurate, those are Moffett and Nichol numbers. And my argument is Moffett and Nichol has been painting a picture. They've been giving us a roadmap of what their projections look like. That's not a federal beach, right? The federal beach has a totally different model than the projections that Moffett and Nichol provided.
Right, but federal beach, I mean, so if we get our first report from Army Corps in January of 2026, 2027, you know, becoming a federal beach is gonna be pushed back multiple years from that. That's the first time we'll see anything from them, right, as far as a proposal? So we're nowhere close to being a federal beach in early 2027, correct?
Correct. It would be a couple of years after that, if likely.
Oh, it's, it's 2030, 2029.
Five years out. Which is what we're trying to do, is make sure we can get through the next five, six years so that if we ever need the nourishment again, it's as a federal beach. But that doesn't mean no money.
Once we do the 2026 nourishment in January 2026, we don't have a major expense for another five years.
Barring any hurricanes.
Right.
Yeah. Depends on Mother Nature a bit, but in general...
We get FEMA money.
Other than, we have annual monitoring.
Three years later.
That, nope, nope, nope. If you look at what's happening in the national landscape, FEMA is not an automatic. And that's what I've been saying. Be very careful and very protective of your general fund because... Be very careful and very protective of your general fund because it really, if FEMA goes away, then that puts more pressure on the state for funding. And we won't have state and federal, we'll just have state to support us and our, what we would have to ante for storm reparation may be, that's monies that may not be refunded. So we have to be very careful about our assumptions about what's happening and who's going to give us money and when and how. And I mean, it's just, it's not a given.
Don't you love chasing rabbits?
This this is a big one. But I think, depending on how these bids comes out, I think we're positioning ourselves as the best we possibly could be. I think we're in good shape. It's expensive to fund beaches. To your point, that takes three sources of revenue right now. It takes every bit of the accommodations room occupancy tax from our visitors. We need to continue to make sure that revenue source stays healthy. It's dependent on that three-cent tax rate. We, that's what the the residents contribute to the beach and it's a benefit to everybody that we keep those revenues in place right now. We'll continue to review them. Okay. Capital projects, uh, these are kind of non-departmental discussions. Just want to make sure we're all on the same page with that. One of the biggest, obviously, is the rec center. Again, without the fire department discussion and the rec center topic, we would be at a very well-balanced budget for you right now. But those are two very important and very costly items that I want to make sure we hear your concerns and and directions on proceeding. The rec center, as you know, has come a long way in this last year. We've had a great committee and done the recommendations for the feasibility of doing it and where to do it and some rough estimated costs. We're at the point of go, no-go. Do we want to move forward and pursue this as the original steering committee has has recommended? And if so, what does that look like? Putting that design and architect component in this upcoming budget? And then, as you know, we've asked for the Partif grant, which we've gotten some clarification on since submittal and they are, they said it's new. It's a new requirement in the Partif grant that it will go to construction. So we would be funding design this year. But again, that's so costly. And before we move forward, I want to make sure that's what council's pleasure is.
What does the Parkers grant entail?
We requested $500,000, in which we would match 500,000. But if we're doing construction, it's going to be way more than that. But 500,000 helps a lot. So we went ahead and applied for it. You all approved that. But it would not benefit us for probably another eight, nine months during that timeframe. We would be moving ahead potentially with the next phase of it, the design.
It's 5% of the construction cost, roughly.
Perhaps. We would have to RFP that and see where that lands. Could be as much as 10%. But do we want to proceed? We have 500,000 in the budget currently to proceed. But you see all the other items that'll be competing.
I've yelled on the screen top of my lungs for three or four years that we have a state of the Ark Town Hall building, state of the Ark Fire Department, and a old decrepit rec center. So and every year when we talk money, we say, well, let's put the rec center on hold. You know, let's put the fire department on hold. I don't want to put the rec center on hold. I want to go forward with it this year.
So financing options, right? So a bond referendum is something we would consider?
Uh, would not be my first preference, no. I would look at some some general, we've looked at bank loan financing. Bond is an option, but there's multiple types. A GO bond that goes, has to go out to referendum wouldn't be my first option, but we have some other instruments that we could pursue, all of which will roughly land you at 800,000 a year debt payment. We've run a couple of the numbers. We've gotten a quote from a couple of folks, just rough numbers. So it's more than a penny. Penny and a half was our original estimate of what that would cost. That doesn't have to start this year. If we proceed with the design this year, it would make it a little bit slower, perhaps, of a project, but then we would know if we received the $500,000 grant or not. And then we could proceed with that tax increase next year. Or proceed with it this year, acquire some of that money and hold it to defer or delay the amount of of bond funding we would have to do.
So at the council meeting, we had a couple of options that were presented to us, but we didn't vote on what option to move forward on. So at what point would we be doing that to incorporate this mindset?
If you all said go now and proceed, we'll bring that back to you at a council meeting soon, or June, perhaps, which way to proceed?
I know you're always comfortable having a strong reserve.
I am.
But is there a thought of borrowing a percent of that overall cost from the reserve before we even look at bonds or financing?
You absolutely could. You could. We're we're recommending five and a half million currently out of your reserves. But as you saw from the audit, we're at a 92% level. I think we all feel very strongly about making sure we keep that at a high level in the general fund, at least until we know about our our federal beach impacts. But yes.
With the accommodation tax and the floor room tax and sales tax, isn't the reserves growing every year a higher amount each year?
No. We've maintained right in the 90s. I believe it was slightly higher a couple of years ago. But it's always been around the 90 range because we do use it. We have used it in past years. Last year, we used it for all the capital. I think it was a $3 million utilization last year. It's 5.5 million this year.
And you're thinking at this particular moment, unless something else comes up, that that is possibly set aside for rec center costs?
We could use it for that, yes, sir. I don't think that's an ongoing 10-year funding solution, though. Yes.
But the funding solution for a 10-year period sure does go down if if you start out at five and a half million dollars on the front end.
Has anyone looked at a fee-based, or maybe more like a membership-based cost to offset the cost? So for example, it wouldn't be come to the rec center and sign up to use the fitness equipment and pay $15 a month. It would be every taxpayer in the town of Oak Island is charged $4 a month as your recreation membership and you have unlimited access to everything that's offered by Parks and Recreation.
Including concerts that you go to for free.
And I just threw $4 a month out there. What what would that number look like? What would a what would a monthly membership charge to every taxpayer look like? Is it $3 a month, $4 a month, $4.50 a month? And we support that with unlimited access to everything, like no more fitness membership, like you just walk into the gym and use the fitness equipment because you're you're a part of the town of Oak Island and you have a membership for unlimited access to Parks and Recreation. What does that look like?
I know the steering committee has talked about increasing the fee structure more of on a user fee basis. I I don't know that we've explored that, but that's something we can bring back to the steering committee and have them look at all those suggestions. But that they have definitely talked about membership options, user fee options to offset some of that cost.
What Mark is talking about, what the steering committee is talking about is getting $5 instead of $4 and getting $7 instead of $5. But what Mark's proposing is, here's a way to pay for a rec center.
Same as if it's a tax increase, tax increase, then it's enough to cover the utilization for everybody. You just call it a fee instead of a tax, but we're moving towards the tax instead of fees.
A fee is a tax. Let's be honest here. But that's not a bad solution because it makes everyone a partner. Bringing this about and maintaining it. It's an interesting argument. I just, it would have to be bonded, at least a significant portion of it.
Great point.
It would have to be not to exceed 15 million. And I mean, absolute hard line there. And I think five, seven, some use of free balance, the reserve to cut the cost would be sensible. And it seems like you've settled on 5.5 and I could live with that. That would be my minimum. Mark's idea is interesting. I mean, I know of only one community that does that, and that's in Florida. You know, it's but it's it's regarded by the residents. My daughters are, it's it's a tax, right? It's, but they have a beautiful community center and pool and blah, blah, blah. That would be a way to do it, or the traditional tax, right? Which is reduced because we've spread it out over time and we've made contribution from balance. The 30 million number, I can't abide that and I've got to break that apart.
I think that was where the steering committee was, was 15 million max.
12 to 15.
That was the presentation I was given and that's a no starter for me. No way.
That didn't get off the ground.
So I agree with what what Liz was saying about FEMA is that we need to be very cautious about rating the general fund. With all the talk coming out of Washington, FEMA is on the chopping block. The money is going to be passed to the, the states will be responsible with no additional funding.
I agree with you completely. FEMA is FEMA's debt. What I'm saying is 29 million and we would have 24 million left. That, to me, is a sufficient reserve. That's, we're not gambling at that level.
I would just be very concerned. Taking 5 million this year for sand, I get it, but for future, taking money out for, you know, rec center, I would be very concerned about doing that.
Fair enough, but let me just argue back and we can discuss it that way. For a long time, I've objected to how high this fund is because you can make the argument, and I will make it, that you have taxpayer money that is not serving any purpose except for an event which may or may not happen. If the rec center is truly some universal need that we have, and I do support it personally, if that's what it is, transferring this money to make the tax burden and the execution of the program more efficient, I'm okay with that because we still would have, correct me if I'm wrong here, Catherine, 24 some odd million dollars in reserve. That's three storms.
No.
Or maybe two. Yeah, I have to take FEMA.
It could be one.
One.
It could be one.
Okay, and the sun, yes, true. It's enough that I would be comfortable, we're not rolling the dice, we're living on the edge, we have a reserve. That's all.
But that would be a one-time.
Yes, one-time, absolutely, one-time.
I would be comfortable with a one-time.
And the the bond, the referendum, I think is is something for us to consider. We believe that the residents, citizens have told us that they want this, but a very small subset of the citizens have told us they want this. With the bond referendum, we'll find out exactly what percentage of our citizens want us to move forward on this, in my opinion.
So so Catherine, you're you're not leaning toward doing a bond referendum?
Of a GO bond type that he's speaking of. Uh, there's certificates of participation, installment financing, straight-up loan, some form of debt I'm comfortable with. Geo debt would be my last preference. We can do it. It's a lot more work upfront, there's some cost implications. I I would do a deeper dive into that, but it's not as simple as just put it on the next referendum.
You leaning towards special obligation bond?
I would be leaning towards a basic, straight-up loan with our partner banks through an RFP that is simple and low cost.
Catherine, is there a way for us to put something on the referendum in November? Just a question about whether or not we move forward on it.
That's a, that's easier to do.
I just, I don't know if we've received the level of input from the citizens that we'd like to receive.
We'd have to research what what type of questions are able to be put on a bond. Do you know the rules on that?
I think you can put a bond on there, but I don't know that you put a question about should we fund a rec center.
Okay.
You can't, you can only refer it in for specific things.
Yeah, we have to research that.
So something I'd like to add on to Mark's suggestion, this was a concern, a high concern of the steering committee, not only our current fee structure, but really what we were concerned about was people who are not Oak Island residents using our facilities. Pickleball court, rec center, all these things that the citizens of Oak Island have to pay for. When folks from St. James come over and play pickleball, they don't pay anything toward new lighting or resurfacing the courts or any of those things. And so I hope that whatever kind of idea we come up with, we also look at how to capture revenue from non-citizens. They need to be, just like the occupancy room tax helps pay for the beach, they need to be paying for this amenity.
I agree, that that's hard to carry out.
It is, it is hard. It's complicated and.
Hire somebody for $15 an hour to sit at a pickleball court to check badges or something.
I like the conception, I like what you're saying.
Essentially, I like.
It's doable for a rec center, perhaps.
Right.
But even though the court, I mean, the people that are coming from St. James don't want to pay the fee to St. James to play at St. James, so they come here and play for three. Yeah, nothing against, I mean, they're, you know, I don't know if they're cluttering the courts or not, but I think conceptually, having something in place, at least investigating whether we can put something in place. If we're going to charge our residents, I love the idea, Mark, conceivably a monthly fee, then we would have to do something for non-residents, either give them the opportunity to pay or they don't dispay.
Just like a parking, out-of-town parking pass.
Well, with, I mean, with today's technology, you can easily install electronic locks. I mean, I hate to go to that level, but that would be a control point where every resident gets a key fob, they can get into the fitness gym, they can get into the pickleball courts. You know, they have their little fob that they scan and it unlocks the door and you have access. And I will concur with Terry because, you know, in the past, people always said, well, people from outside the area are using our pickleball courts. And, you know, we were always like, well, how can we prove that, right? Paid parking came along and that proved that people from outside of our area were using pickleball courts because the amount of phone calls that started coming in, people complaining that they had to pay for parking to play on the pickleball courts, that alone proved that there are non-residents using a lot of the facilities, right, especially the open sports courts. So I think we could creatively find ways to restrict access to amenities, just like other neighborhoods. I can't go into somebody else's neighborhood and play pickleball or I can't swim. All of those amenities, even within neighborhoods, are all have controlled access points. So I can't randomly go in there and and use their facilities. So, you know, not saying that we have to become a country club membership type of setup, but I think we do need to protect the residents who are investing in recreation sports here. It it's their investment, right? So anything we can do to help, you know, protect that investment, I would encourage.
Great discussion, great discussion.
The other one, we're still in capital projects, kind of on a non-departmental basis. The other thing that's not in the budget that we hope to bring forward in the near future is after the streetscape land use plan completion this fall, just keeping this on your radar, we will be bringing back some recommendation. we will be bringing back some recommendations of what we need to do for that. That's not in the budget at all because we don't know what it is. I think it would be foolish to guess and tie up the funds now. But that will be another use of these either reserve funds or perhaps future tax increase needs.
Don't we have money set aside in last year's budget for streetscape? We didn't set any aside last year?
Everything at June 30 rolls into your savings pot, your fund balance. And then we can re-appropriate it as necessary. So anything that didn't get spent in prior years, I think you may be thinking of the consultant, the design that they're in the process of now. So that coverage did roll forward to this year to pay for their services, yes. But nothing in there for, do we extend streets, do curb and gutter, make sidewalks, make greenways, make light signage? None of that is budgeted at this time. So again, I'm just trying to keep everything in front of you to understand all the things that might be coming forward. So the streetscape could be very, very pricey. When we get closer, we'll continue to work forward to what that would look like. Do it in segments, perhaps you do one commercial corridor at a time. We'd like to do it in conjunction with the stormwater so we get some dual benefit for it, enhance the landscaping. It's a very, very exciting program that it too may take reserves and/or tax increase to fund at some point in your near future. The other thing we're, of course, looking at is, do we need additional parking? Is that on town-owned property? Do we need to buy or sell property to accommodate that? We'll be bringing that back as a recommendation at some point. We're very close. We'd like to see what the recommendations are from the streetscape to make sure we're targeting those, perhaps purchases appropriately. But we'd like to be able to offset some of that with potential sells of property the town is not using. So that's forthcoming in the non-departmental capital projects.
I know grants are never automatic, but are we pursuing grants on streetscape?
Hallie is doing a fantastic job of tracking all of those grants. We've articulated three new ones. The Part of Grant was the first one, so we went after that based on the timeline. So the answer is absolutely yes. I can't name them for you, but we've even got Melissa from finance. We've got a grants team now that all the departments are looking out for themselves. We're also monitoring, I get the league's information. We're tied into quite a few points of opportunity. And Hallie's been a tremendous help in spearheading that, particularly for the economic development ones. There is one, and I can't think of the name of it, it's the Rural, Rural Something Grant that is the next one we're working on with our league partners that we were eligible and received their free grant services, you'll recall. So we are using them, they've been very helpful with the Part of Grant and the next one that we're working on for economic development.
Do we know yet what our final cost was on the rec center feasibility study versus what we had budgeted?
Ooh, that's a great question. I don't know off the top of my head, but we can pull that up.
If we would have any carryover, you know, to get us started on the, you know, design process.
Well, I think we can move forward with the design process regardless, because that'll roll into fund balance. So what we'd be talking about now is appropriating the total amount of money that we need and it would just come from the fund balance rollover. We would not be able to encumber it and roll it over because it's a different purpose.
Yeah, I'm just hoping if we had some leftover.
Andy might be able to tell you the exact numbers.
Yeah, so the one, we've expended most of what they quoted. The one thing that we did not do was another public input session. And so there will be some savings if we do not carry forward with that. Several thousand dollars, but when you're talking about a design fee of a $15 million project, that's a million and a half dollars, so it's not going to take us very far.
Right, I just didn't know if we had budgeted much more than what the HHRFQ, you know, what the final...
$1,000 and change, I think, of which several thousand dollars was a community engagement sort of presentation kind of thing and they, we didn't do that. If you recall, we did it very early on, it was I kind of hosted, so.
Thank you. Yeah. So the next phase is expensive. That's why we hesitate, it's not funded. It is easily something that we could accommodate out of the general fund because it's a one-time expense, accommodate out of your general fund, fund balance, excuse me. So it's a one-time, it's eligible, I would be comfortable doing that for a one-time move forward for the design. But that's competing dollars.
Sorry. 15 is a bare bones estimate. I mean, that really gets us to not a lot of elbow or leg room, not...
And no upfitting.
Not any social space to speak of with the rec center. So it's really bare bones. Not that there's anything wrong with that. However, if there are affordances that are important to the public, I think we need to keep that in mind, like social space, like somewhere to sit and while you're waiting for your court time or your class date. So there, I think for that, we need to look at other funding strategies such as fees, such as naming opportunities for the center itself, for every room, every, you know, I look at my Catholic high school, when they rebuilt, they name every chair in the auditorium, they name, you know, absolutely anything and everything. And it may not be a lot of money, but it does add up. So I think we need to look elsewhere in order to build a center that... We don't want to build something that, you know, the next day it's outdated. So I think we just have to find those sources to help augment that 15, that 15 million.
Did we ever get a number back on the cost to remodel the current rec center? That number was missing from the report that evening.
No, it was in there.
Yeah, it was in there, it was two...
Two million, just updated. I thought it was more like 3.4 to four to bring everything up to code and update all the systems.
It is in there and very least to your, I think what your point is, you're correct, we're going to have to do that.
Anyway.
No matter what.
There were several different options provided. So there was the code only, which brought us up to meet accessibility code and that kind of thing. And then there was the full renovation. I've still been working with HH even since we presented. We've worked to refine their estimate and it's 14 to 17 million, depending on some of those kinds of decisions.
But there was a single line, I think at the very top of one of their options that was to bring this building into code compliance only.
Correct, I don't recall right off the top of my head, it was several million dollars. You had two or three million to do nothing but replace the HVAC and roof and windows and accessibility code and upgrade the bathrooms to meet code, that kind of thing. If you want to do a renovation to make it match some of the other spaces, that's when you get to the higher, the full number of 17.4. But, so those options affect the overall budget.
But I remember him telling us, even if you do nothing else but just touch the building, this is what it's going to cost you to bring it up to code.
Correct.
True.
Update the...
Correct.
But that, that number for the current rec center site, that six to eight million, whatever that number was, that also included the new building behind the rec center as well. I was just curious, what is the single number to renovate the current rec center all by itself? Like, not just bring it up to code, full renovation of the current rec center?
We didn't dive specifically very far down that. We didn't, we didn't carry that through to fruition.
We tried to make the current rec center usable.
Yeah, they just felt like it was so small that we really didn't go through it. It was kind of a code minimum only, which was a few million dollars, and then matching it to an addition. We didn't ever say, if you take these 10,000 square feet, here's what you get out of a newly renovated center. We didn't really ever look at that option very, very in depth.
We, but we can get close. Because we know the bare minimum, yeah.
I was just curious what that package looked like with a fully renovated rec center without the new addition and then a renovated community center. I know they had an addition on to what's there today. There was some square footage added. But what I didn't see in the community center renovation was, I saw some space there that was undesignedated. Would that be future expansion for the towns, like staff and needs? Like, are those future office space in that community center renovation?
Correct me if I'm wrong, the committee was pursuing just the rec center and we did not pursue additional changes to the community center.
Okay.
Correct.
Pass down the road.
In a nutshell, what they found when, looking at the feasibility of renovation of the existing community center, there was a lot of needs. There wasn't going to meet what the group kind of defined as their program. So it was really more of a demolish and rebuild situation for something like that.
Okay, all right. But we're not, I don't recall the number just to do the project down at the rec center site being $15 million. That total number was a smaller number than that, right?
Twelve to 15, wasn't it?
So 13 to 15, yeah.
With the addition, what, I had to break it down, full project cost, FFNE, the whole thing, was 14, 17 million in round numbers. And that's an addition of a gymnasium with some of the elbow room that we're talking about. So perimeter around the court, walking track above with some cardio equipment above, program space that could also meet some needs as kind of a community center because that's really how that facility functions is, really is a community center for camps and all that kind of stuff. And that was the, that was the higher end of the 17 million dollars. Really part of what pushed it in the 17 million dollar range also was making the exterior aesthetic match a new addition. So aesthetically, making it look like not an old 50's schoolhouse with an addition on it, but to make it look cohesive.
If we're done, are there any of the capital projects, Catherine, if we got them all?
Those were the major, major ones I wanted to address. If there are any other major capital concerns, you've seen the paving, the items that are in alignment with the strategic plan. Some of them are for this year, some of them are for future years. But I think that's all the major capital.
And the Senator Department said they had no immediate needs.
Correct. They've been continuing their enhancements.
And stormwater, are there any capital projects there we need to be mindful of?
We wanted to, we recommended waiting for the master plan to see which projects we should then pursue.
Well, and those enterprise accounts have their own fund balances. So a lot of capital gets funded out of those fund balances.
Right.
Which are all based on user fees. So they, I hate to say it, those enterprise accounts pretty much self-manage, not to underscore the role of the staff there, but they, you know, user fees and growth are a little more easier to project.
Correct.
And capital needs are a little easier, so I usually worry less about the enterprise accounts, so.
Except for stormwater, because it's fairly new, it hasn't generated a large fund balance. Golf, solid waste and stormwater are your funds that struggle a bit more. But water and sewer, absolutely correct. In fact, it's very healthy and you'll find that when you go to the bond market because you have to have a debt coverage ratio that is sufficient. So they won't let you get that far behind or else we won't be able to sell bonds. Our wastewater and water accounts are very healthy and substantial fund balance to have a healthy debt ratio. We're very fortunate in that.
So if we've exhausted this, before we jump into revenues and fee schedule, let's take a 10-minute break.
11?
We can come back. Sure, we can do 11.
Perfect.
It's an easy number. Thank you. Help yourself. It's okay. I think it's been five seconds.
What a great...
Okay, we are back from break. Catherine, I give it back to you.
Thank you very much. We will continue right along with our agenda. Next is a discussion of revenues and the fee schedule. We've been focusing on the expenditure side, but of equal importance is the revenues. As Councilwoman Martin said, the revenues for the enterprise funds are contained in separate funds. Those are all fairly well-balanced with the exception of the stormwater and solid waste, which we talked about earlier. So what you have before you is a deep dive into the general fund revenues. That is primarily your ad valorem taxes and sales taxes. I just want to hit those at the highlights again so you'll understand the assumptions, but you can see all of the numbers, the five-year trends. The very first one, the ad valorem tax rate, as we discussed, that's based on a 1.5 growth assumption. We continue to monitor that very closely because it is so much lower. Prior year taxes, motor vehicle taxes. And you can see every single one of them on here. We are doing very well in sales tax. We've been, I think, fortunate in that regard. They are a little bit conservative because if we have a downturn in the economy, we don't want to, we don't want to estimate aggressively on revenues. So these are fairly conservatively estimated. The fire district fees in the bottom of the second page, I'll bring your attention to that because that is assuming that everything stays as is with fire fees. That would be the number that we would be able to utilize. The Powell bill did go up slightly. ABC revenues are coming in very nicely. We are anticipating decreases slightly in some of the permitting and fees that can follow the trend of the slower growth. Right now, they're still considerably busy on permits, so it's not significantly reduced.
Catherine, before we walk this page, I had a question the other day about the status of the new ABC store. Do we have any information?
Last I heard, they are still pursuing it, so it is moving along. I have not heard more specifics than that in a long time. Would you like us to get a follow-up on that for you?
Thank you.
So they're committed to this piece of property?
That is my understanding, yep.
And no reconsideration?
Really a couple of weeks ago. They do believe it'll give them the larger space that they need.
Their neighbors are not happy, some even commercially.
When they came in and told us they were getting ready to buy that land, they said it'd be two years. That was about two and a half years ago.
Yeah.
We'll get you an update. Sure.
Catherine, can you explain again, not wanting to leave this page? How does the sales tax work? Who gets, who gets what?
So there's multiple, multiple components to your sales tax, there are four different pieces. There's Article 39, 40, 42 and 44. Those are just general statutes that prescribe the distribution. They're all slightly different, some include food, some don't. The majority of it is, it's collected, it all goes to Raleigh. It is redistributed, distributed to your counties and then the counties distribute it to your municipalities. And I can't quote you exactly which is which, but I did ask Helen to make sure we had it just in case that came up. So the, some of the distribution from the state to the county is population-based. So the, some of the distribution from the state to the county is population-based. And then from the county to the municipalities, it's also population-based in most cases. There are benefits, pros and cons to the population-based as opposed to an ad valorem-based, but we have no say-so of that. It's either statutorily or by the county set. The details of which one is allowed to include food and not, I, I don't have those, I can get, if you want that level of breakdown, I can get that for you, but that's the general, all four of them.
Thank you.
Quarterly, quarterly, and here in this county, we are population-based distribution from the county.
Now, again, just looking for...
That's a, that's a great topic.
Where are the opportunities?
Thank you. The, the downside of being population-based for sales tax distribution like we are is because as the county is experiencing good growth, I think the last number I saw was five to six percent. If that is true and the county is experiencing this growth and we are not, it also affects our, our sales tax distribution. We immediately get less of the pie. That's, and, and Leland growing more so than us, you get the idea. It's a, it's a pie, doesn't grow. So the, the more we can grow it here, certainly the better, but it is not a one-for-one dollar generated here comes right back to us here.
Right.
It does not work like that.
Are we the second largest municipality in the county?
Probably compete with St. James, plus or minus ten.
They have ten thousand residents.
You can ask their mayor.
Ten thousand residents?
What's, who's that? We have none.
Plus or minus ten thousand. We do have a number. Do you have the exact?
Yep. Who are we looking at, St. James?
Are we the second largest municipality in the county?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Who's third?
St. James, no, is that right? Yep.
Yes. St. James is right behind us, yes.
They're seventy-nine, hundred, we're at almost ten.
We're at ten, they're at what?
I can't wait to do this again.
Seventy-nine, hundred.
Wow, seventy-nine, hundred.
Leland, of course, by far the largest. And then Boilin Springs Lake.
It's bigger than Southport.
Oh, yeah, Southport's small.
So, again, it just puts more emphasis on our need to grow commercial space.
Amen.
And if we can't do that horizontally, we need to think about doing it vertically. So if you think about a second floor on some of, in our commercial districts and facilitating that so it's more attractive for higher-end businesses, not, it doesn't mean our mom-and-pop businesses don't need to go, I mean, need to go away, it's just we need a blend. So if we can increase our sales tax writ large, it may not come back to us dollar-for-dollar, but it's still an increase. I just think we have to look for every opportunity we have to, I think we do a decent job of keeping our funds in check, but we haven't really thought a lot about, until recently, about investing in where we can grow our revenue. Yin and yang.
Yeah, commercial, commercial growth is, is a critical component because it contributes not only to our tax base, but it contributes to sales tax. It attracts more tourism. And back to the conversation we had about our own brand. You know, if we can wrap our heads around how do we promote the town of Oak Island as a brand and develop our own line of merchandising, guess what? That not only, you know, covers the costs for the merchandise, but it generates sales tax. So that would come right back to us.
So the other conversation happening at the mayor level is the idea, which is, it's only an idea at this point, and the mayors have had the benefit of someone who knows how, and his profession was in attracting commercial. So he's kind of laid out, you know, some, some global strategies with the idea being that if we, as a community of ten thousand, we can't contract, we can't attract a whole lot, right? But if you add ten thousand plus ten thousand plus eight thousand plus what all that BSL could be, right, and Southport, now we can bring in others. So the fact that Publix came here and they tried to prove that they won't, that, that this investment won't work, and they were able to do that, and you've got, now I can't, I'm drawing a blank, the store in Southport that just opened up, the craft store.
Hobby Lobby.
Hobby Lobby, thank you. So what, what were the levers? What do they see that maybe we're not seeing? And then if we make ourselves more attractive than some of our other communities, but the idea is you've got the Crystal Coast, you've got the Emerald Coast, we could become potentially the Cape Fear Coast and market ourselves together because I think everybody wins when the region wins. And that would be, that's the idea that the mayors are working with. But again, it's only notional and we've not made the connections with our own town and economic development strategy.
But that's very important, Mayor, because, you know, our commercial properties are finite. We don't have a lot more commercial space left in the town limits of Oklahoma.
It's currently viable.
It's currently viable. And holding the line on rezoning like we did for the property in backup lows and not allowing them to count the existing retail, you know, commercial space as their commercial space.
Very good discussion, thank you. And at the end of the revenues, I just want to point out the very large appropriation from fund balance. You'll see it there as we've been talking about only using, currently it's five eighty-two, but that number will change depending on how this conversation ends, we recommend it, but that's the target for usage of the fund balance this year for one-time capital in addition to the five million transfer that is for our beach nourishment project. And that is the sum of your general fund revenues. I will say we're having a heck of a time with the new financial system making our, our revenue numbers work, so there's still a couple of places that current year might seem lower than it should be, and that's only because the, the movement from journal entry hasn't occurred yet in some of those lines, but...
Seven hundred thousand dollars interest investments.
Yeah, that, thank you, Bill, that's a, a good one. When I got here, I started immediately moving money from zero interest checking account over into a four percent high CMT trust appropriated account, and that has been accruing substantial interest. You heard...
You were giving ten thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, we, we've moved a lot.
You get seven hundred thousand this year.
We've been over a million. You've heard the, the auditor really compliment that. I, I will say I've been, I'm being extremely conservative this coming year for two reasons. One, look what's happening in the market. CMT's already come and advised us that their rates are going down. We continue to watch the Fed and if, what they do on dropping interest rates throughout the year. That's good for the economy, it's bad for savings. So we've pulled back on the estimate of how much additional earnings. Seven hundred thousand dollars in our investment is still very good, but it's certainly a lot less than we have been. I just didn't want to build the budget counting on investment earnings that we're already seeing may decrease. And the other is we will be using a lot of cash this year for the beach, and once that cash is gone, I don't have it in the investment tools anymore. So we will see a decrease in investments and interest earnings therefore.
Catherine, page five, zoning permits, forty-three oh-two. Significant decrease there.
Which line?
Ten, three hundred, forty-three oh-two. Zoning permits, five forty-one, second item down.
Anticipation of what Matt's been showing us for the housing starts, some of those development permits slowing down. Could that be perhaps a little cautious? Maybe so. I'd rather err on that side with the trends we're seeing.
So difference between a development permit, five forty, versus a zoning permit, five A zoning permit?
A building permit versus a, a larger development versus a one-off house build.
Got it. Thank you.
Catherine, page ten, the transfer from parking services fund.
Yes, sir.
Curious about the disparity between twenty-four and twenty-five. That's, we, we're adjusting upward there.
So this is to stay exactly as it is current year, based on council's policy of the fifteen percent, thirty-five percent and fifty percent. It's the exact same as the current year.
Still malleable because we talked about that earlier.
Correct. But what is in there right now is the same as current year. Any adjustments? Feel free to let me know what you'd like to see there.
Catherine, the appropriated fund balance of five-five-eight-two, tell me again what that represents.
Yes, so the five hundred thousand is coming out of our general fund savings, our fund balance, to transfer over to the beach nourishment fund for the sand for this year's project. That's the five million transfer. The other five hundred and eighty-two, seven forty, which again, that number I can tell you right now is going to change slightly based on today's final discussions, but we're trying to stay in that five, six hundred thousand dollar range of using fund balance for one-time capital that is in the budget requests from the departments. Much less than prior year usage. But if you opt to move forward with some of these projects or capital components that we'll see at the end with all the prioritization, then we could pull more out of fund balance to Mr. Box's point. There is some flexibility there. If you wanted to use, for instance, you felt that a, a fire truck that was requested was critically important, we'll try to accommodate it, but that is always an option. I would never recommend you use your fund balance for ongoing operating, but if there are a few additional one-time capital pieces that you would like to see through that, that is an available option, I think that would still keep us in a very healthy fund balance position. I'd be comfortable with that.
Page six on a recreation program, ninety-five thousand dollars. So that tells us that's what they collect in fees for dance classes and yoga classes, camps and what have you. So that's the gist of their revenue generating.
They have a lot of different, if you keep looking down the lines, they have a lot of different breakdowns in the rec department, and we've tried to do the best we can to estimate those. The summer concert series, the sunset on summer series, that's our estimate based on them trying to achieve a fifty percent cost recovery for each of those major activities, plus, as you say, the other programs that are ongoing.
Catherine, page ten, seven items down, I think, transfer from parking services. There's eight fifty there, but it shows one point two, so the delta between the one point two, the parking fees that we took in, ten three hundred, ninety-seven fifty.
This is the transfer from the parking that's the same as current year. I'm sorry, I'm not seeing your question. That line is eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
Same as current year, is recommended for next year, based on the policy of fifteen percent in the parking, stays in the parking fund, thirty-five percent moves to the general fund, which is the three hundred and fifty thousand, which that's the thirty-five percent of the parking fees. That is for your paving contract so that we can have additional street paving, and the other five hundred thousand, which is fifty percent based on your, your policy, for just general fund expenditures.
Thank you, that's what I was looking for.
So now you've seen every single line. I just want to mention briefly the fee schedule. Since I've gotten here, I've tried to reemphasize for our boards, for our staff, for you all, that the way a fee schedule works for towns is that you all are the authority, period. Boards, staff, no one else can determine what we charge for anything, that that should all go through the town council. I like to have it very organized, collected in one fee schedule book. So if you remember, last year, we approved the budget and the supplemental fee schedule. Yeah, Bob's got the example right there. We're continuing to refine that. We've found some places where there might have been minutes in prior years where it was agreed to increase and never got into the fee schedule. I know the golf courses requesting, requested some fee increases that were not consistent with the fee schedule. We are really trying to get it all together this year. We'll be bringing that forward very publicly and transparent with the budget.
Catherine, last year, paid parking for staff members, we made some accommodations. Can you share that again with us?
Oof, yes, that has been carried forward since paid parking was here. I believe you all approved it. Lisa pulled the minutes for me because I wasn't even aware of that last year, and she pulled what was approved, help me out, it's a certain rate.
Twenty-five dollar, one, twenty-five dollar permit per out-of-town employee.
Okay.
And Otto has agreed to continue that.
We're going to continue that this year as well.
Unless you all would like to change your...
I like it.
No, I think it's a fair idea.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
One car per household?
It is, it's one per employee. And a lot of our employees are residents.
Yeah.
So they, they have the residential rate, but this is the others. Thank you, that's a very nice thing for the employees. Okay, revenues and fee schedule. Are we ready to move forward to the strategic plan? Please remember, I just want to keep this in the forefront, we will be putting this in the budget, this will be adopted part of your budget, so I want to make sure everybody has any last-minute concerns. I, I have heard some wording adjustments and tweaks that you'd like to make. Happy to go through that now, or you can send them to me. That would not be a problem. I would say any major adjustments in the strategic plan would, depending on if there are expenses related to that, we would go back and, and talk to the appropriate departments if needed because your budget right now is based on that strategic plan. Again, not everything's going to be done in year one. We've passed it out for summer year one, summer year two, summer year three, but certainly if you need adjustments in the strategic plan, let me know now and we'll try to accommodate everything that we can.
I'd like for any changes even in wording to be a public discussion. I mean, I want, I don't want wording to get changed without everybody talking about it.
You have a fresh copy in front of you. Just start with suggestions. I know you've seen this several times now. You, you went through a prioritization exercise in January, that's what kicked off this budget. That's what the departments have been working towards, that's what the numbers before you are based on. Some of them do not require substantial funding, and some of them require very substantial funding and are not in this year's. We've got that up, up front for anyone watching at home can see it as well.
Yeah, I would, I would love to know what concerns this council has, right? So you've already done the work in terms of aligning all of your, all of your team's presentations with respect to the priorities that we already decided on, and if there are changes that people would like to make, I would love to hear what those are.
I can tell you, this, this team is working hard, moving... I can tell you, this, this team is working hard, moving towards it. A lot of these are, they are the right things to do anyway, and we've been moving toward them. A lot are additional input. We've heard from you all, from the community that have been added in. We'll just start number one, if that's okay. Well-run, efficient government. I can tell you, we're already working on every one of these. Is any, we did this exercise before. I suggest the same type of process. Feel free to tell me if there's any additions or deletions in number one. Good. Any tweaks? Number two, any additions, deletions? I think I believe I have it. Back up to number one, I'm sorry. I personally would like to recommend one wording change on number 1.1. Number five, it's very strongly worded. And I think we'd like to make sure we've done a thorough analysis in this year to ensure that that is still the correct path forward. So I may suggest something more like evaluate a better location for the operation center, if that's acceptable. And not prescribe, because it just might not turn out that way. Is that okay?
I've been told that's a very high cost.
Yes, it is. And there's, there's not additional funding. There's a plan right now that we're already looking for to be able to just have that general feasibility for that, but at minor cost. So there's no additional cost included in the budget. That would be a future year. But I would like to adjust that wording, if everybody's okay with that. Thank you. All right, number two. Adds, deletes, or wording changes?
So is 2.2.1 still relevant at all parking spots identified in the recent parking study?
2.2.
Are we going through these? We're on 1.2.
Well, I didn't hear anything on number one.
Right, other than...
Sorry, 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, 1.4? I'm sorry, Ms. Carter, if we'd like to back up to that.
No, I just didn't, I didn't move forward from 1.3, sorry.
That's okay.
Is everybody...
I'm good.
Okay with that, okay.
I'm just thinking on...
2.1. And Mayor, your question is 2.2.1.
Does one accurately reflect where we are, or is there other wording that would...
That's a great one. Add parking spaces identified in the recent parking study where feasible.
Well, I know that we're also going back to validate what those recommendations were and considering for ourselves. So it's, you know, to maximize parking spots.
Reconfigure.
To include
Maximize.
Recent feedback from...
I didn't see much feedback from that parking study. I would like to have our public works start addressing some of these parking issues.
They are meeting on that as we speak, yeah.
Yeah, they're validating.
They're validating.
Well, we were presented that night, didn't take us anywhere.
No.
Not in detail.
But they have added a lot of the resident, I think all the additional residents parking places have been added. There's a lot of new signs that they've put up. I think they're done with that project.
I just didn't think that particular line represented what we were actually doing.
Yeah, it's too broad. It basically says add 'em all, which is exactly what it says.
And not inclusive of all of the work that we're doing.
Exactly, so. Is Scott, it's been mentioned a couple of times, and I think more than just from myself. Is Scott looking at maximizing LSV opportunities? In other words, I know I've suggested, and I think I've seen nods from other council members, that parallel spots could hold two LSV parked parallel. They have to say parked parallel in the parallel spot, but two could get in there instead of one. So is Scott also looking at maximizing LSV parking?
We will make sure that's included since it was not.
And I think there are other ideas about...
But we asked, I asked Walker that specifically, and their response was it was not in their scope.
Right.
So, but I know Andy is working on it though.
Okay.
Because of how they narrowly interpreted the word vehicles.
Yeah.
In their mind, LSVs are not a vehicle.
Yeah. Well, and now we also have to factor in UTVs. Since the state approved UTVs for road use, they would not, in my opinion, qualify as an LSV because those UTVs can be significantly larger. I've seen some already that are the size of a full-size vehicle operating on the road. So we would have to exclude UTVs from that LSV conversation. I think the state does. I think when you read the state regulations on these extra, you know, regulated modes of transportation, they clearly delineate that. We just need to make sure we're doing the same thing.
Good. Include an LSV opportunities in that one, and some wording to that effect? Okay, good.
Catherine, I want to jump back to 2.1 if we can. Just a question for you on behalf of the town staff. I know we want things in here that are measurable, but I also heard you say in the budget process how taxing it is to put on events. So are we hurting you and staff by specifying at least 12 events and at least five events?
We know that we do well more than 12. So what we were, summer concert series would be counted as one. So we're working on that. We're trying to get a handle on exactly how many we do, how many should we do. So to me, that's a minimum of 12, and I think we achieved that. But your point is very valid on the second one especially. It's the non-town events that are adding to it that we don't have as much control over. Five may or not, may or may not be the correct number.
So like what town resources, just as an example, will be required for this Saturday's Jimmy Buffett Island tour? I mean, I'm assuming they got a permit and...
Yep, it goes through an internal review, which takes some administrative time. It goes to police and fire and public works, pretty extensive reviews on their part. It depends on the number of people they're anticipating, if they're requesting road closures, trashcans. Do we need to provide restrooms? The pickleball courts were a very intensive weekend. So it just depends. I haven't seen the details on that one yet, but...
Can we use the event as a pilot to capture what we believe our contribution was to support that event? Just so we get a feel for it. Like, I don't know, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but were you kind of going in that direction? Like, hey, we got this non-town event coming up. Is it costing us $50,000
Yeah, of course it is.
As a town to support this event, and we captured a permit fee?
Right. How much of that should pass through? How much should the town be...
Our chief said they do 150 events a year.
And police as well.
Yeah, and that's manpower.
And some of them are, some of them are smaller and don't take a lot of manpower. So we can't lump them all together. But we are trying to get standardization, is what we've been working on for special events, including if you have an estimate of this many people, this is how many police, fire, public works on us, and then a charge for that.
What is the permit?
That's what we're working on.
What does a permit cost?
250, I believe.
Okay, so it's not $25?
For the large ones, I think there's a difference. If you're just using a shelter rental for a picnic, it's not 250. That's different, but a large special event.
Golf carts, bicycles going up and down all of our streets, that's a $250 permit. Hopefully.
It depends on the level of that that they're asking.
The point to that is, is that the increased pedestrians, bicycles, LSVs become a safety factor for folks. And at what point do we say to them, you've got to have some traffic control at various places and...
Got to help us help you.
Right. So many bathroom, public bathrooms, have to have an EMT.
I mean, it's exciting to have all that stuff, but we're talking about budget today.
There's a cost to it.
Have to have a first aid tent.
Well, and we may want to consider like standardizing routes. Like all events have to operate within this, you know, half-mile, you know, or whatever, right? Designate routes along Oak Island Drive. So people aren't stretching things out from the golf course all the way down to town hall or something like that, right? So we start putting some controls in place, I think would be good. But, so is there a way to estimate what this weekend's going to cost the town?
Yes, they've had to do that in their request form.
Is this a parks and rec dilemma, or is this a town administration?
No, that goes through town administration. It's coordinated through Rose.
And to make matters even worse, is we have two events on Saturday. We've got the seafood festival as well as the Jimmy Buffett tribute.
We had three this last weekend.
As best we can try to coordinate and not have those overlap.
Yeah, like two or three weeks ago, we had the Art Guild and the Beautification Club was having an event at the same time.
Yep. And it's hard, it's hard to say no. We try to get to yes, but as he said, we're swimming under the water.
Fire chief said he has to send people to 150 events.
Well, and then just one more comment about events, and then I'll be done. There continues to be some confusion on behalf of visitors. When there's a town-sponsored event at the park, parking is free. If it's a non-town event at the park, are people paying for parking?
Yes.
Unless the town signed off on it.
There, how do we communicate that to those people attending a non-town-sponsored event? Because they think that anything going on at the park means free parking. And that's not what that means.
Unfortunate misconception. I think we need to do a better job of continuing to push that out.
Current, you say something from time to time, just to stand in people's minds.
Yeah, Mike, Mike does put it out very well, very clear, usually visuals and everything in the current. It's those that come that don't read the current that we have trouble reaching.
It's people that don't check the website, don't read the current. And I'm not saying that that's right or wrong. It's just they don't use those methods for communicating.
And, and we have tried to encourage those requests to consider having it outside the paid parking season or do a very clear job themselves when they're promoting it, who they're telling to come to these events. Because they do a lot of that promotion on their own. I know there was some confusion. The groups have that responsibility to be very clear to their people as well.
And one group even advertised free parking when they did not have permission to have free parking. That's right.
But I do like the concept of non-sponsored events by the town are scheduled outside of parking season.
We try to encourage that. A lot of folks say, no, we want it in July. Okay. But here's your dilemma. You've got to help promote very clearly. And, and we've redone the application. I think it's, it's very clear, it's very clean. It asks for more information, but I think we will do a better job of receiving the information that we need. We have a special events committee now that will get together, discuss all of these, including how do we make that very clear? Giving early feedback to the requister so that they're not getting their approval two days before the event. We're giving their approval back to them with clear verbalized conditions in writing. So we're really trying to enhance that process, and I think you'll see much improved. We are keenly aware now of that situation, and we will continue to work towards not having that confusion. But yes, if it's not a town event, it is not going to have free parking.
Any other paid, I mean, any other event in other municipalities or even in the county? It's not unheard of that people have to pay for parking. Whether they're shuttled or whether they just park. I mean, it's time that people just accept that. It's not a, it costs us, therefore it should cost them.
It costs us and it costs the contract that we're under for somebody else to administer that program. They lose money every time we have an event that has free parking.
Yeah, they don't appreciate it.
All right, anything else on number two? Any of the ones in number two? One, two, three, four?
On 2.3, number three, we've talked today about possible ideas for increasing revenues for recreation programs. Does a funding strategy for the rec center, would that be, would that include looking at memberships and/or a fee-based system?
Yes. Would you like us to add that to that, so it's very clear? And, and develop a funding strategy?
It's kind of to Mark's point about looking at a fee island-wide to cover recreation expenses. And I'm just wanting to make sure that we don't lose sight of investigating that.
Perfect. I can add that. Comfortable.
So 232, and we had a conversation last month, oh, last meeting about this with the, you know, when we first started about the pier, pier house that may in the near future, or maybe not too near future, need a complete redo, as well as what the future of the Ada1 event center might be.
That is definitely one of the longer-term ones.
But along those lines, I'd like to see if Channel 8 would just say stuff like, new and improved par three golf course, have you seen it lately? Or the pier complex, t-shirts, hats, blah, blah. If our Channel 8 would just have a streamer every once in a while to let people know that, I mean, par three's looking good, but a lot of people don't know it's looking good. And the pier is more than just a wedding venue. Retirement parties, graduation parties, 50th birthday party. We could help them some.
Yeah, I think Channel 8 is really an opportunity, you know, to have commercials, so to speak, but also to be able to expand programming in general so that people
Announcements.
It becomes a destination for information. It's just another outlet that perhaps we're not maximizing.
I watched Chief Moore pull up on his golf cart and talk about, and I mean, and I watched it.
Slow ride.
Yeah. But I would also watch if they said par three golf course. Show me some of the greens, how nice it looked. I'd probably stop and watch it.
Okay, number two. Number three. We will accommodate all of those comments.
We at three?
Yes, ma'am.
Rink to Reef is a 501(c)(3) that was mentioned when we initially discussed that. I'd like to delete the reference to Rink to Reef and add other natural shoreline. So it would read, expand our oyster reef plantings and other natural shoreline initiatives along the ICW, just to get rid of a specific name.
Good, thank you. I'm giving no objections to that change.
Mention one thing that's been on my radar for, well, since I was on the planning board, and it may not be applicable in here. Number three, promote clean water is what made me think about it. The county decided not to implement performance standard... think about it. The county decided not to implement performance standards for the water supply out on 211, the deep wells. And you were, you and I went to that meeting. Planning Board asked about the town of Oak Island doing it on our own. The answer we were given was, we shouldn't do anything until Brunswick County does any, does something. I disagree. I think Oak Island ought to take the lead on protecting the wells that are in our town by setting some kind of performance standards for development around those wells. If the county's not going to look out for us, we should be looking out for ourselves. And I don't know if that falls under promote clean water or not.
I would agree. I've been to many meetings, not just one.
But our, our planning board was shut down when they tried to bring that suggestion forward. And I, I think it's a mistake for us to not be proactive on that.
Well, it's the difference between leading or following.
Right.
Not to be critical, but it's, it's factual. The county has not done their due diligence and have drug their feet over developing protections for the aquifers, our primary source of drinking water. It becomes more and more mixed with, as time progresses. But that doesn't prevent us from developing those protections for our own, our own aquifers.
I'll have to do some research on that for you.
I can give you some information to, to help. Two years ago, just as an example, in January, there were a set of protections, performance standards, if you will, that were proposed to the county that most of the local municipal leaders, the mayors, agreed with. But when impacted, and I can get you those if you'd like, when, then subject to developer input, all of that became tabled. Months later, the county brought in a vendor to develop recommendations for performance standards. And the vendor has since given their report, and there's still no action on the part of the county. They're probably trying to find that other path between stakeholders that where everyone, no one would be happy, but everyone would at least be agreeable. But I think the January performance standards would be a good place to start, so you're not having to reinvent the wheel.
Thank you. Were, were there specifics that you were thinking of that, that?
I can't all the time. That I remember.
Because we buy the water from the county.
Yes, we do.
We have properties around those, we have incorporated properties around those wells, and so we can control.
Just that.
You know, it's almost like another set of supplemental regulations for what you can do on that side and, and...
So the county's requirements are only for those in the county property. I think there are one, if not two wells within Oak Island property that we control.
Any objection to pursue?
No, I think stronger statements.
Being into that. Okay. Thank you.
334, maintain Tree City USA status. So we don't, as far as I'm aware, we don't have any signage in Oak Island about that. Southport does. You know, putting like the billboard at the airport, you know, are we getting any airtime on the billboard?
Yes.
We are.
I've seen some stuff.
Yes, we definitely.
Some messages like that, like Tree City USA, and, you know, any ways that we can, any way we can continue to brag about some of the great things that we're doing here.
We'll take that, that goal and develop a strategy for achieving it. Okay, good.
Just, this might be a minor item. I meant to ask the last time we went through these objectives. So for 3.3 dot 2, it says enforce the tree ordinance. Isn't it the vegetation ordinance? We, we have a vegetation ordinance. We don't have a tree ordinance.
Correct.
You're correct.
And that, and that might seem minor, but...
You are correct.
I wouldn't want someone to read this and go look for a tree ordinance and can't find it.
Say number 32. Thank you for that.
So now that we have a name for the iconic live oak tree at Bill Smith Park, the Serenity Oak, should we?
The iconic Serenity Oak Live?
Serenity Live Oak.
Serenity Live Oak.
First of many. Who came up with the name?
It was a contest.
It was a contest.
Nobody, who, who, what, who was the?
I don't know who, I don't know who suggested that.
It wasn't said on Saturday.
That was just the winning votes. I don't know who actually proposed that one. It's a good question. It's a great name. It's a beautiful tree. If you haven't been out there to see the post and rope around it and the mulch, and we've removed all of the old concrete parts and the falling apart swings, and it, it looks spectacular.
I stumbled upon that, didn't he? Did he come in here talking about it early?
Well, he did speak to it because he's the, the tree person. I think it was during all of that early years. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's been maintained, but this is a, the next level of iconic preservation of that tree.
Now we need to add it to the selfie tour.
Yeah.
We don't have a selfie tour yet.
This opportunity in the making.
I've been studying definitions. That was passive aggressive.
It was meant to be sarcastic, but...
Number four. Number one, the Economic Development Strategic Plan. You'll hear about that at your May council meeting. Hear some more on that.
Nice.
That will really set our path forward on economic development. Looking forward to that.
We talked a little bit about having Withers Ravenel help us identify the correct split. Do we want to call it an 80/20 split, or do we think we, we could possibly be 75/25 or something? Could it, could it end up being something other than 80/20?
What's our potential?
Optimal.
It could, and I would, I, I think may, perhaps we need to have clarity on that because there's a way to look at that ratio from land-based, and there's a way to look at it from revenue-based. And when I look at it from revenue-based, it's a very different picture. We're not even close.
No, we're close.
So maybe we have, let me, let me try to rework that.
Instead of 820?
Yeah, leave it.
Ideally or optimal? Replace 80/20 with ideal or optimal?
Yeah, because if the 80/20 stays, then you need to flip the words commercial and residential, because we're not trying to say we want 80% commercial and only 20% residential. That would be physically impossible.
Optimal.
People will have to move.
So, but if the 80/20 is removed, to your point, then it doesn't matter what order.
Good.
Language that frames that, that this is a goal, and it's, if it's your judgment, it's, it's a revenue goal, not a physical goal we're aspiring to. The traditional standard is for revenue, right?
Perfect. Thank you.
Can always amend it if Ravenel comes back and says, you know, you really, you should be using this ratio. Okay. They're going to be close, 75/25, 35/35, something like that.
Well, and that'll shift.
Optimal. We'll use optimal. Yep. Excellent.
I attended a great workshop, but it was an invitation from the Secretary of State, Marshall?
Lane Marshall.
Lane Marshall, yesterday, specifically around small businesses and entrepreneurial efforts. Very exciting. And that was at BCC and in conjunction with BCC's business curriculum in their office. Forgotten the name of it now. April... Small Business Administration? It's not, yeah, they have another name for it. They actually have an office to coordinate resources for small businesses. And, yeah, it was very enlightening and, and very exciting.
Under 4.4, we're talking about marketing and attraction of people and visitors and businesses. I noticed that the, I don't know what you want to call it, the surround around the monopole sign has been completed.
Yeah.
Is the programming of that structure up to Oak Island, like it's got a, it's got a little overhang on it, like there's room to put, you know, there's a kind of a picture frame area there. So is that going to be up to Oak Island to develop that program?
Yeah, we just met with Howie and Guy and had a team meeting to make sure we're all on the same page and what our responsibilities are. That is yes. A subsequent parking lot, and even a Oak Island, welcome to Oak Island type sign out in front of that. And then we've discussed in the future some boards that would have a map of events and locations on Oak Island for visitors to be guided to what's where, what activities we have. So I think all of that is yes, and then some. We're continuing to work very closely with them, letting them get through their structure. They're working on the landscaping next.
Well, they're still working on the structure.
And then the landscaping.
And also landscaping, initial landscaping that defined the entire space. They'll soften the structure, but there's an opportunity for that to develop, kind of along the lines of what I had proposed as an open-air welcome center, where people can come and learn about all the Oak Island, all the affordances that we offer.
Besides that place, that's an ideal spot for the pier complex to have information about the town. The par three golf course, clubhouse, have information about the town. Bring these people into our fold.
QR code goes a long way to providing resources we otherwise don't have space for in a single...
But if people thought they could get information out to par three, they might walk out there and say, hey, call Larry, let's play some golf tomorrow. Look at all those people fishing.
Yeah, it would be a great, kind of like self-service visitor center opportunity.
Back to 4, 4.3. You sent out the information about the facade program, and of course, you said it's in its first year. But four businesses, and one of them was way down Long Beach Road. Is that even in Oak Island?
Yes, we wouldn't approve anything that's not in the town limits.
I mean, that was next to the Beach Road Furniture, that granite store.
We go all the way to stoplight.
It's past the stoplight.
And we have, we have small, we have small spots that are in the town limits.
So by us making that parking lot nice, because it was our small little spot, that sure to make Southport look good. And our, and our other one was Kim Anderson may or may not ask about cleaning up her parking lot or something. I had a lot of kickback about, I, I want more specific language in what the requirements are to get taxpayers' money to help them. That's my one beef. I just, if I need to clean up my front yard, I've got enough money to clean up my front yard. My neighbor may not have enough money to clean up their front yard, and they might need some help. I can take care of my own front yard.
And we're going to do end of year on this and prepare. We learned from the first year, and I think we'll improve it until we get, and we'll certainly get your feedback on different criteria if you'd like to see. I think that's appropriate to adjust it for the second year.
Catherine, 4.4.1 is missing a word after collateral.
Yeah. Collateral of material? How about a suite of material? You have suggestions?
Yeah, it's collateral. Promotional suite of promotional...
Collaterals.
Resources.
Promotional material? Thank you. Almost there. Number five?
A lot of this is covered in some of the other numbers. 5.3, balanced preservation enhancement of commercial areas with new development opportunities. I don't think we're all in favor of commercial areas. No problem.
Excellent. And this is saying, make sure our, our ordinances are consistent with that goal and that desire. All right, number six, last one.
I only have one item on six, so I can go last, or I can go first, or...
Go.
Six, 6.1 dot 6. Plan, design, and construct a new fire station on the mainland. This is a three-year plan. The county is now building a brand-new fire station at Sunset Harbor, which is just a short distance down 211. So it looks like we've missed out on partnering with the county for an Oak Island fire station. So I would suggest that this needs to be softened up. Maybe the plan kind of stays in there for the next three years, maybe the design. I don't think we should try to commit to constructing something in a three-year window since we're getting a brand-new station at Sunset Harbor.
Agreed, Mark. And secondarily, with the populated, expected population growth of 1.5% and very little new construction on the mainland, Williamson Tractors and Holpine Forests has slowed down precipitously, the need for a mainland station at this point is probably not in the cards.
Did the fire chief this morning allude to the fact that he's going to be talking about a new fire station?
Yes. And I think if we're smartly planning for the future, at least identifying and reserving the whereabouts for that would be prudent future planning. To your point, the construction, depending on growth, may be more than three years off. But I think we, we know that that's the, that's the rest of the town, that it will at some point grow and develop, and we need to be prepared. I don't want to get caught behind the eight ball on that either.
Like Mark and Bob said, Sunset Harbor just eliminated a lot of the pain on 211.
Different fire district.
Mutual aid. So we may respond first to something on the mainland, but now that South Harbor Station would provide mutual aid and come to the scene.
I understand, just like St. James.
Right. So, and that's going to be a paid station. They're going to be staffed, so...
Maybe it's evaluate and plan and design a... Maybe it's evaluate and plan and design appropriately.
Something like that.
A minimal metal building with, with two people and a truck.
Well, my concern was the word construct.
Prepare.
I didn't wanna hold anyone committed to constructing something in twenty twenty-seven, so. Because at this point, we still don't even have land, right? And so there's still land planning and negotiating that has to happen. That could take two years or more.
It depends on what happens with.
How about prepare for future fire station needs?
Yeah.
Plan, design, prepare for.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I would parse it by saying initiate planning for potential fire station. Maybe the county will be in a generous mood, they'll build another one.
Six point three, complete six additional crosswalks on Beach Drive. Are those ones that have already been submitted?
Those are the ones that we're still waiting for our DOT permit. The town is not holding that up in any way. We are still waiting for that. But the money is in current year's budget, so we, we hope we get that approval so that we can encumber it before the end of this year, as we have anticipated that coming to fruition soon.
Most of this stuff in six one, six two, and six three is what the police, the fire, and Scott from Public Works have told us they're working on already. Repairing the potholes within forty-eight hours. So I mean, it's stuff they've already committed to.
Well, you heard them in their budget, because their budget is to align to the strategic plan. And that's a perfect example of why these are together. This is your guiding document, your goals and objectives. They built their goals and objectives based on that and then did their request for what they would need to be able to achieve these.
Yeah, cascades.
Six point three point four, additional crosswalks, and we've listed Seventy-Ninth Street. That is the planned location of the ABC store, the new ABC store. And I don't know that the town can mandate that they help us with that feature, but it would be nice to remember to ask them to include that in their design of that corner there to provide a pedestrian crosswalk.
Do we do that with wobbling lines?
That's great.
Opposed to straight lines.
And we know these, these are our goals, but we have to work with DOT, and they may change that goal for us. But we have to have something to start that dialogue and that discussion, and that's where the previous discussions with DOT had been. So I didn't change what I thought was already laid out last year.
It would save us much.
A lot.
That's good. Good. Excellent. Thank you for your help walking through that. We will get those.
Great job.
Changes made.
This is such an advancement, Catherine. Kudos. This represents a lot of hours of work.
Thank you. And we have the last forty minutes or so to make sure we hear your final thoughts on priorities. Helen is passing out your shopping list. I think Ms. Gartner helped me coin that phrase. I'm cautious, but I'm cautiously optimistic that nothing out of the blue came up during these meetings that we hadn't anticipated. There was no drastic additions, no significant reductions in revenue that we've seen yet. So with that, I'm cautiously optimistic that we may be able to add some of this back. Again, this is where it gets really tough and you have to make the hard decisions. I hope we've provided you enough information and time for discussion to help you make the difficult discussions, but really narrowed it down of nearly a hundred million total budget with all of our funds combined, we're down to these few items of discussion. Consider that a win where we are. I know you've heard, we'll just walk straight through them. Helen, you wanna walk them through those items that were reduced?
Yeah, so we can start with the police department, of course. The only thing that we held back from them was one police truck. Of course, you know, it's not just the price of the truck, but it's the price of the outfit that is required as well. So you're looking at ninety thousand dollars for that one unit.
They also asked for a IT person.
Now, that is in the budget as it stands. We did not.
That's correct.
Take that out.
And that's not just for police. You heard his needs, and the rest of the departments have similar needs and concerns, but it's top priority for all of us, and that is included.
And that is included in the admin section rather than just the police section.
So before.
Go ahead.
Move on. Because of problems in the past, there was a vehicle replacement plan put in place. So either this qualifies or it doesn't.
So the, you're correct. The plan for the police department was two a year, and one is still in the budget. This is the second. So if you fund that, that is consistent with the two-year replacement.
Following the plan, because for a while, we became an auto dealership, so. This is not in the plan. This is a next-year item.
This would be consistent with replacing two a year. Yes, sir.
I'm good with that.
Didn't we clear out our surplus inventory? Like, has everything gone to auction? We've collected everything. Do we have any vehicles?
It's close. It has not, it has not been finalized yet, that surplus process. They, absolutely not for the police department.
No, 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 but just curious. I knew we were building up a surplus of vehicles that weren't capable of meeting our needs and needed to get off our books. So I was wondering how that was going.
They're out of Airport Road. We had intended on doing a surplus auction, and I believe that the vendor, it didn't work out, and they're looking at gov deals, making sure that happens before the end of June.
And one moved to the fire station. They needed another vehicle. So Catherine, what's missing from this, not to be critical, I don't mean that at all, but what's the impact of not doing these things? So what does the police department lose by not funding a ninety thousand dollar vehicle this year?
It'll just have to be done at some point, or you wait till it breaks and then you fix it, and that's costly. The longer you keep vehicles, the more you're gonna have to put in to maintenance.
Correct.
It certainly can wait. That's why we pulled it out, to wait till you saw all of the needs. There's no doubt it's a need, but can it make it one more year? So not doing it just runs the risk of higher maintenance costs.
Right.
So what you're saying is, right now, we have a zero tax increase budget. Anything on this list that we think has to be done this year has to find some money somewhere.
I believe that we will be able to accommodate some of these, and I'm trying to gauge from you all, if we have some remaining without a tax increase, what would you like to see? And addition to that, if you determine that you wanna see all of these, I can tell you confidently that would be a tax increase. And if that's what you say, we'll build that in for your recommended budget as well. I want, I'm trying to slow walk through what your preferences are to build the recommended budget for you.
Bill, if I did the math right, the items at the top, not including the merit increase, was one million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you add a hundred and fifty thousand to that, that's one and a half million, which, based on six eighty-two, would be a two point one cent.
Tax increase. That, that nullifies the thirteen going down to eleven to accommodate the fire tax. Down to ten. Down to ten.
Roof wall repair for the police building is really not something we can put off.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
Can't outrun water coming through your walls.
Yes.
Well, it's, it's, you know, it's just gonna continue to work worse and then get more expensive. Having replaced a good portion of my facade, it's just, and it's, it's a health hazard. I don't think that's something we can postpone.
What we don't wanna have happen is it get to the point where we have to shut down the police department, isolate it, and move everybody out.
Right.
Is there, does insurance compensate some of this?
As I said, I would like the opportunity to continue to pursue some other options. I don't think that's a have-to for this year.
You don't think it is?
I do not. That's why we did not recommend that one initially. Also wanna make the point, you can't just add them all together, because there are general fund and stormwater funds added in here. So that's not a sum total. You're welcome.
See, the stormwater stuff is fee-based.
Correct. And if you, if we do the increase in the stormwater fee from seven to nine, ten dollars, those will be picked up.
They're up.
Yep.
Yeah, so I think we're down to the fire tax, because a lot of this stuff, obviously you recommended we not consider it for a variety of reasons, right? I respect that. I'm just torn because police and fire, although they're very, very expensive, they do provide not only a necessary service, but a level of excellence that we're approaching, and I would like to maintain that. So the cost, if I remember correctly, was one sixty. That's the salary plus outfitting them. Or am I underestimating? What's the cost of a fireman?
Right at a hundred.
A hundred per employee.
Turnout gear, Benny's.
All right, so we're looking at two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars, which if we didn't, and I would prefer not to set the fire tax at anything other than net neutral year one. We do have paid parking money to play with, right?
Right. Right now, it's built into your budget, but there is some remaining in the parking fund, correct?
You can move where it goes, correct?
Yes.
All right, so instead of that huge infusion of money for paving roads, right, we can hire two additional firemen.
That is correct. You have three hundred and fifty additional for paving. That's correct.
My colleague, Mr. Martin, jumps in here. That's a near-term solution. Long-term, those positions eventually would have to be funded, right? I realize that. I'm just saying personally, I'm willing to live with that and I hope that one five isn't underestimate, and you know, it works out. He's saying he needs it now, preferably, but he needs it definitely next year. I mean, he was pretty forceful on that. That would be the way to do it without blowing up the budget.
You're saying two firemen, not three?
Right, that's, that's a point I wanna raise, 'cause I've heard you for about the third time now in these budget meetings refer to two personnel, and I wanna make sure we understand, the chief asked for six last year, so we deferred three. He brought three back again this year, so I don't, I wanna try to get him three if we can.
He asked for seven. One was part-time last year. He asked for conversion to full-time. We have funded that. So of the seven, we funded one.
Right.
Full capacity.
So of the three that he thinks he needs now, and I'm in agreement with Terry, that he's asked for three, we've said no a couple times, it might be time to say yes. Has he already gotten one of those three? The part-time has been converted to full-time, or was that?
Oh, that was his fourth.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so now you're looking at three hundred thousand.
Well, we're.
She said there was three fifty, though, in the parking money.
He's trying to get one more per shift.
Correct.
So to give him two still requires him to juggle. Giving him three, then he's got one more per shift. And I don't know how we could ask him to be more accountable and run the numbers any differently than he already has.
If we can say no to the unit trailer and no to his four-by-four truck with an uplift.
One's a boat, one's a mobile command unit.
I like the, and the boat for a hundred and twenty thousand, he seems to think he may be able to get for eighty.
No.
Too much maintenance and outfit that's not included in there.
It's a whole, it's like Space Force. We're gonna create another whole aquatic element.
But we do, we do have partners that I suggest there might be some opportunity to work with.
I guess the question is.
Funding both.
Does he, is it absolutely essential he has three, or is three the idealized, you know, point? Because two has to help him, it has to give him more. But three is, if it's ideal, that's one thing. If it's necessary, that's another.
He runs three shifts.
Yeah, we can afford it. He's got four shifts, I know.
Yeah. So three shifts, one per shift continues to fit the apparatus when they roll out.
They need three.
Yeah.
He needs three.
So when he gets on site, you know, there are certain ones that are dedicated, and there's only so much they can do until mutual aid arrives, which ultimately delays the response. I think he, I have every confidence that he's doing as much as he can with the resources we've given him. But John, I like your idea, if we have to back off of paving for a year in order to, to catch up, to give him what he needs.
Well, we've got the Powell bill money, which is coming in about a hundred thousand dollars more than we used to estimate it at. So right there's a hundred thousand more in the paving already.
I think we kinda found out last year, though, taking money out of the general fund for ongoing expenses is not a really good idea.
You can only do that so long, though.
So I would be, I'd be inclined to go to seven and a half percent on the fire tax to pay for the three firefighters and not raid the general fund. I mean, I think that parking, I mean, parking, paving is a very hot topic. Bill, as you know, you own that. And it really has been, I mean, I think that the public has been, the citizens have been very happy with the results that they've seen so far in the work they've done under your leadership, Catherine, this year, and hopefully on an ongoing basis. It will continue to fixing the roads, and then also taking a look in at Yacht Drive, Pelican, and Dolphin, and fixing some of those dips.
But the people whose streets are not paved, they don't wanna hear about a new RICs entered, they don't wanna hear about a new police car. They wanna know what happened to my street.
I think we could do both.
Yeah.
I think a lot of that has to do with keeping the paving company here. So in recent years, we've not been able to keep the company here. So I think, again, hats off to Catherine for holding the line and forcing these vendors to come back, opposed to leaving for more potentially lucrative.
But we were able to give them, yeah, it's a million dollars. We were able to RFP a larger contract. If we take that away, three fifty, then you're looking at a six hundred thousand dollar contract. Would that attract vendors?
Back to Bob's seven and a half percent, I mean, seven and a half cents for the fire tax.
Anything else on that?
The merit increase. So on our first day, I wrote down that three percent merit max for employees, and now you're saying it's one percent. So I'm confused.
Okay, so three percent is already baked in the numbers. That is what I included for all departments, is a three percent increase.
Across the board, regardless of personnel.
I'm sorry?
Three percent.
Three percent merit. So they would go through the evaluation process, but they could earn up to three percent of an increase.
Some would receive one, one and a half, perhaps.
I don't think we have any ones on this staff right now.
You know your people better than we.
We will continue to hope that they all achieve a significant level of merit. This is as an option for you, because I, I keep saying, I think we have some flexibility. If I can fund some additional things and still keep it a balanced budget, which of these would you like? And one of the things that I want on the table for discussion is, I heard you all several times talking about recruitment and retention. I would love to be able to get to a four percent merit for employees. So this one is suggested, that's the cost of it, in addition to the three that's already baked into your numbers.
Let me fluff this around.
Yes, there are cost of living increase also, or no?
No, I mean, you, you could do a three percent as a cost of living, a three percent merit.
Oh, if you want, it's three percent max.
My personal preference is unless it's excessively high interest, a cost of living increases as we have had in past years, and then again, I would advocate for that. When we don't have the inflationary numbers right now that we have had in the past, my preference is to have it meritorious. preference is to have it meritoriously based, that you have to work and be successful and hold our values and be hardworking and be what we need for the citizens and a high level of customer service, and everybody just doesn't get the same.
I like your.
Discourages excellence. And I want to encourage excellence through a merit-based program. If we had enough to do a little bit of a COLA and merit, I would be comfortable with that. 3% is probably bare minimum that you can have good differentiation for a healthy merit program. So that was the bare minimum. That's why I said if we can get to four, I would love that. I can have some differentiation between your superstars, your average performers, and those that are not meeting expectations.
So Catherine, you're closer to this than we are. I appreciate your asking what we would like to see. But what out of this would you recommend? Rather than us kind of willy-nilly and making assumptions about what any of these represent, you've come through, you and Helen have both come through the budget. You've heard all of the arguments. I'd be interested in hearing what your perspective is.
So our recommendations were before you, as you saw in all of the numbers with all the departments. Those were our initial recommendations. Having gone through it, now if we have some additional to put back, our recommendations would be the police vehicle. The stormwater, but as we said, that's.
Enterprise.
If you agree to go with the rate increase on stormwater. I would hold off completely on the Public Works, the police department wall repairs, although we know we may need some repairs. And I would hold off on the Public Works mower. That was a, an option. That still is an option. I think what we want to do is do an RFP to bid out the yard waste collection and see if we can bid against that for taking that in-house versus a contract, and we'll see where that shakes out. If and when it turns out that it's so expensive to contract and we can do it cheaper in-house, then we would recommend moving in that direction, and it would take people and a mower. And that's the time at which I would bring that back. So I don't think that makes sense.
Is that the contract that Green Man is currently doing?
Yes.
Two things. Yeah, there's a Green Man contract that we're also going to bid out. What I'm talking about is our yard waste collection that we do in-house as well as the mowing. And if we do that in-house instead of that vendor, then that would be the add of a mower. And it would, it would absolutely be required. But that's only if we bring it in-house.
So right now, you're not recommending the 5430, 530, 5430, those three items? They're not at the top of your list?
Oh, and the fire?
Oh, and.
The only thing we might would be the truck.
Yeah, the only thing we would look at is the four-by-four truck. And the reason that was out is because we thought we were going to be able to repurpose an existing vehicle. So we pulled it out. We've since had some discussions, and the fire department feels that that vehicle would not work for them. But we're still trying to work on being able to achieve that for them without the additional vehicle. We may have to sell one because they.
You're saying a police truck, a fire truck, and then the stormwater enterprise is the top of your list? Police truck and fire truck?
In addition to, the one that's not on here is the Parks and Rec discussion that we've been having, and that's sort of not, I don't, I don't have finalized recommendation for you on that, but that would be at the top of the list as well. But I think I can accommodate all of those without talking about a tax increase.
The stormwater truck, is that also going to be able to be paid from within the stormwater fund?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So if I captured all of those correctly, then if you had a, could make a recommendation, it would be for the $90,000 police truck, $75,000 fire truck, fire four-by-four truck. The stormwater maintenance crew and truck are covered, would be covered by the fee increase. And then the merit increase, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So those four items.
And you can swing that without increases?
Um.
They would have to go.
That's what, you sharpened it. But then I would go down your list and say, okay, we can get the number one on their list. We can get number two, and then it stops. We won't be able to get number three without a tax increase. Or perhaps three of those. We're close. We're very, very close.
So here's my top three.
Thank you.
4% merit increase for staff. So go from three to four. The police truck, number two. Number three would be the Public Works employee.
We, we have a whiteboard ready. Do we need to whiteboard this? Anybody else comfortable throwing out their suggestions?
I would support your recommendations. Mark's got them in different order, but he's essentially supporting your recommendation. I still think we should use paid parking funds to hire three additional firemen. We have the money. Because I think the tax increase is going to be as controversial as not doing more paving. People are going to see that and say, okay, we've converted the system. Why didn't, why didn't you follow the same logic and apply the same protocol you did during the reavow? So our answer is, we need more firemen. The tax is higher. I don't know if I'm comfortable with that. But your recommendations, Catherine, as you've explained them on the top of those.
And I, to your point, John, if we use parking money to onboard three firefighters, I think there's less, less risk in that regards because that money is readily available. And then we see what the growth is for this next fiscal year. If we beat the one and a half percent growth projection and if we return to 2% growth, next budget, those firefighters are paid for, right? Because the new fire tax immediately funds those positions for, for another fiscal year, right?
Right. And/or if we demonstrate to the public that the conversion, the system, because of the offset in the general fund, results in net zero, whatever the decimal points are. And if the following year, the fire tax base expands, problem solved. If not, in the second year, then it makes sense for him to go back.
Yeah.
And say, okay, look, I want the idealized set of equipment and people. I need three more people. Or I need you to pay for three more people. That's why we're going to 7.45. I just think it's going to set off alarms in year one. That's all. And we have the money. We can transfer it to the general fund. Buy the firemen with it.
I also agree with Bob, though. We have to be sensitive around this whole paving topic, right?
Whatever's left, we'll give to the.
Right. We've been supplementing paving to try to get a better deal on the RFP.
That means no paving for a year till we get up to a million. Every year, we think we're not going to make as much in accommodation tax, and every year, we make more money in accommodation tax than we project. I think we're building in a cushion right there.
You have for the sand. It all goes to your beach nourishment. But yes, you're correct.
Well, also, the, talking about paving and not paving. We take in more money for parking likely this year based on the changes we've made in the system, either by adding spaces. I mean, I don't know that, so there's likely a cushion there as well.
We were at 1,358 spots. Where are we now?
I don't know with the, most recent changes are.
With the report, and they're validating those right now. We'll have a new number for you.
But like Liz is saying, that's more revenue because there's more spots, and somebody will be parking in them.
Absolutely. That is, that is the hope.
Is there a way for Scott, I've looked at the parking in the last week, looked at the parking, the street condition assessment. Is there a way for Scott to just tell us where the line is right now? We've completed this and this is remaining because I don't know what's left.
Yep. I've asked for that full analysis, and I know they're working on it right now. We need, we need to see that. I want to be able to publish that on the website, really clear picture. What percentage of our town are we able to pave at this rate every year? And so what does that look like? Are we on a 20-year replacement schedule? Are we on a 10-year cycle? That's what we're trying to refine and get that number down.
And the next time we do a paving study, we need to study the study. Because so many times, people will say, I've got nine potholes. That street over there got paved and it's a pretty good-looking street. And we may agree with them or may not agree with them, but man, we hear that a lot. So I'd like to scrutinize the study.
We can do patching. We still internally do pavement patching. So that's not what they're looking at. They're full resurfacing.
Yeah, because like three years ago, I think it was, we bought Public Works, the roller and the tray. We bought, we upgraded their equipment to do better patching. So we should be maximizing that capability.
He says they're doing 48 hours of learning of a place.
Yeah, it's just the, the regular repaving cycle that, you know, should be 10 years ideally. I don't think we've historically been doing that. That would be our, our target to get there.
Well, and it's unfortunate that I'm not sure, I think even if you do the analysis and you, and you make public that our resurfacing lifespan is every 15 years, your street will be included in getting a new surface. I think it's unfortunate that the Powell bill allocation likely doesn't even fund that 15-year renewal plan. So I think it's a factor of what's the recommended renewal plan versus what is, how do you fund that? What does that look like? You know, I like the word that John used earlier today. What's the architecture of, of where we go financially in the future, right? That's going to be another one of those things. It's going to be like, look, you know, to keep streets at standards, we need a 15-year renewal plan, but we can't fund it with the gas tax money all by itself. You're going to have to supplement that.
Powell bill is going to give us 450 in a good year. We need to supplement another half a million dollars annually.
Because the Powell bill allocation is based on linear feet of your streets. It's not, it's not rocket science, right?
And the gasoline tax.
Yeah, it's all, it's all the gas tax goes into a big fund, and then they're like, oh, Oak Island has this much linear feet of streets. This is how much money they get, you know, so.
As opposed to how much income we're contributing.
Exactly. Yeah.
We get a lot of tourists buying gas. You have a lot on your plate, ma'am?
So if the two, clarify for me, if the two stormwaters is covered, the stormwater items are covered under an increase in stormwater fees, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So then that leaves payroll merit increase, the Public Works facility, and the two trucks, one for fire and one for police, and the others, you've said, could wait.
Public Works is included in the stormwater, too?
Public Works goes into that as well in the stormwater.
Not the facilities position. Just the two listed as stormwater.
Right.
The bottom.
That's what I thought.
Oh, not the mower, not the new employee.
Public Works is in an enterprise fund. That's an ad valorem fund.
That was what Matt's looking to get.
No, Public Works Facilities is in Scott's, and he currently has two people that maintain all of our public buildings.
Okay. My bad. Sorry.
That would, that would be third on our priority list after the IT, Parks and Recs, and then facilities, not including the firefighter discussion.
And you're going to talk to us about Parks and Rec a couple of months from now?
We'll have it finalized for your budget recommendation. It'll be in the recommended
I like the 3% on merit raised at this time. We're just pinching pennies on everything, and I want to continue to pinch them until we get to the end.
Any pushback on that bill would be the, to give Catherine the differentiation that she needs to continue to motivate staff.
And I don't want to take that away from her, but she asked for three.
Now she's asking for another 1% with the additional, with, with.
Yeah, I wanted you to see all the needs and have that balancing discussion. If I had just prefunded it at four, you'd be looking at a longer list of things that cut out of the departments. So we started low, hoping that we would arrive at some ability to have this discussion where you're talking about adding back. You're not sitting here talking about laying off employees or which items we have to cut out of these departments' budget. So I hope that framed it more comfortably for you than having that type of budget discussion.
I'm not going to question your final decision.
You made it easy for us. I tried.
I won't.
This isn't easy, but easier than it could have been if we went the other direction.
I won't question your final decision.
So my logic bill is happy staff, staff retention, rewarding staff for doing the job that they're doing. If we put that as the priority to go to a 4% merit instead of a 3%, they're going to go back and really sharpen that pencil because they're going to be excited to reward the employees as well and to retain good workers. So they're going to be very aggressive in their pencil sharpening if we declared that as the number one priority. That's just my point of view. Because then all their stuff on the list may just fall right into place because they're like, yeah, we aggressively went after. Yeah, and we can do this. So.
You know, and as you're changing the culture, Catherine, I mean, this gives you another arrow in the quiver, right, to get that 4%. I was looking at the League survey, and of the participating towns between 5,000 and 10,000, their combined COLA and merit was 5.3%. So 4% is still under that, but it's better than 3%. So I would support on that.
We caught up a couple of years ago.
We've been, that's right. We've been above average for the last couple.
4%, like Mark said, happy employee, happy employee.
Rec Center and the firefighters. I think we can massage through all of this very effectively. Like you said, we'll sharpen the pencil, make sure that we can still do that and, without a tax increase. The remaining, the Rec Center design, did I hear concurrence to move forward with the design phase this coming year? That would need some additional fund balance money. Would tax increase for it or start slow with a fund balance appropriation just for the design? Wait the eight, nine months till we hear about the grant, and then we'll be looking at a, an increase for construction costs next year, which is your preferred approach?
To slow this also gives us an opportunity to define how we can pursue funds that would augment whatever our direct costs would be. So that would be how I look at it. I have no issue with moving on the design, especially when, we can make it contingent on the grant, certainly. But we don't want to turn down half a million dollars for sure.
And we don't want to slow down our momentum.
Correct. You're absolutely correct.
We slowed down that momentum before.
I would support your recommendation.
On the Rec Center. So, good. Everybody wants to move forward. Thank you. That's, that's, that's huge. A go or no-go decision. So thank you very much. She's writing them up. Make sure we're capturing the priorities correctly. Rec Center design, moving forward. That will be an additional, don't hold me to it, $5, $600,000 out of fund balance, one time for this year, okay?
Yep.
Capture that.
Fund balance.
Fund balance. Thank you. The police truck and fire truck, we will try to accommodate. The police truck, and then also the fire truck. Facilities, Public Works, facilities, employees. Facilities, public works facilities, employee, and 1% additional merit. I think those are the ones that I heard most agreement around, taking off stormwater. I've heard your yes, pursue rate increase for stormwater. Thank you. If we can accommodate all of those.
Now, that's assuming the repairs in the police department are going to be covered by other means, either insurance claims or...
Or a patch until we can come up with a better revenue stream and a real cost estimate.
Okay. As long as the alternative doesn't result in compounding the severity of future work to do the repairs. I mean, I heard Charlie say no mold today. Certainly good news, but I've lived here long enough to know that no mold today doesn't necessarily mean no mold tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
So I want to be cautious about that wall repair in the police department. Keep us updated on that.
Keep our eyes open. Yeah.
Yeah.
Facilities, one new facility first and for public works, you put up there.
Yep.
And that's everything that we kicked around.
So Catherine, have we given you everything in this budget you feel like you need?
I think we're really close. I think the last remaining discussion is, how would you like me to proceed on the firefighters? I think we can do this. That includes IT and parks and rec. I just want to make sure we're not forgetting that. That includes that. I think we can get there. That leaves the firefighter discussion, and that would be your last item for today. I've heard a couple of different directions.
I appreciate trying to make it a sort of lateral transfer for the first year, and it's unfortunate that we can't run a scenario on everybody because for me personally, 7.5 cents decreases what I'm paying now. And I understand that may not be the case for everybody. And so for those people, on their behalf, I don't want to increase, you know, what they're paying, but it's, you know, I'm happy to get a decrease in, you know, in what I'm paying, but we can't guarantee that for everybody.
So yes, move forward with the conversion of the structure to a tax, but no increase. Is that what I'm hearing?
I support, I would support a 7.5 cent versus 7 cent.
Is there anyone that would oppose the transition to a fire tax? Let's just get that out of the way.
No.
No.
Everybody's in agreement?
Absolutely.
All in agreement?
We'll get the county's unanimous.
So then it's a matter of whether or not we fund all or part or none of the request for increased staff.
It's either 7% or 7.5% is what it comes down to.
Well, it comes down to a choice. We could pay for it out of paid parking and reduce the supplemental paving.
For one year.
Or we could set 7.5. I have a different point of view. I'm not going to stand in the way of unanimous council adopting the budget. I'm just saying that money is there, and it's easy to roll it now and set a low fire tax the first year, and he can adjust upward. And in fact, if we do that, we're giving him what he said he needs for the near-term future that he can predict.
Right.
Doesn't matter how he gets it. He gets it.
I would support an alternative source of funding if it's, you know...
Gets him his firemen.
Pretty easy in lieu of a half cent.
Yeah, we have it.
Because once you go up, you're up.
You have it, right, Catherine?
That's up to us.
We have the available funds just by changing the ratio, correct?
From the parking money?
Yes.
Correct.
You said there was 350 there.
350.
And we need 300.
Let's take it one step further. And if the accommodation tax were to give us more than we project, the general fund...
That one can't be used. That has to be...
A percentage of it can.
Yeah, 1.5% of it.
How about this? We'll see when the bid comes back, we will have much greater comfort level with that number.
But I...
A percentage could be used for beach.
I'm not a politician where John's going.
Yeah, let me just put it this way, and I will support providing him with what he needs if we ever set a higher tax. But I would prefer, and I think, trust my experience, and just you want to set a net neutral tax the first year, if we can do it.
Yeah, there's a way to do it.
It takes away all those questions about, why are you doing it to me?
He gets his firemen, the tax stays at 7.
We've been down this road before with assessments, and people just go berserk.
What's your thoughts?
Rather than take it from the 350 for paving, the 500 is going to the general fund. Can we not allocate some of that instead of putting all 500 in? Let's put 150 with 350 going to firemen.
I hate it.
Then I will be cutting something else out because the balance, the budget's already balanced. But yes, that's an option.
Let's not mess with a balanced budget. Let's just not do that.
Right. So you have a bucket of paid parking money that we ratioed out, but if you took 300 and paid for the firefighters, the balance of that you could put into improved paving numbers. I don't know what that number is when you take 300 out. 200, what's left?
It was a million dollars, so you take 350 out, you're at 650.
So there still would be money to enhance paving, just less than what we put in last year.
But they won't come for less than a million unless you go to a smaller contractor.
We don't know.
Who knows? But most likely.
That's what we heard was the concern several years ago, which is why the last couple of years, it's been bumped up to a million. Do we know that there's that change in the market current year? Mr. Martin's identified some other vendors. We could go out to RFP and see.
Well, Bob and I both are saying we want to help the fire department, but we want our paving. If we could get paving for 650 one year and then a million the next year, that would get paving coming every year.
Okay.
Well, but I think we still need the bigger picture for paving. I think we need that all streets are on a 15- or 18-year renewal schedule. It requires X amount done each year to achieve 100% every interval, and then how do we fund that? Right now, every year, we sit here and say, we think we need a million-dollar paving contract to attract a vendor. That's what the vendor's responding to. Who's this? I mean, we don't know. What if we put a $2 million paving contract together one year? Do we find a new vendor, right? Or whatever? We don't know what the market is really doing right now because, you know, we're the town of Oak Island, and the state of North Carolina's paving everything they can find that's flat to pave. I mean, they're literally paving like crazy, you know, a machine out there. And so it's a volatile marketplace. We know we're a small player. Yes, I've been trying to identify other providers that maybe we can learn what their model is and why do they not respond to our RFP. So I think what we've said today is actually a decent plan, right? If we can transition to a fire tax that's neutral, find money to fund three new firefighters, pay for our little priority list by sharpening the pencil, and if we can still try to attract a paving vendor to keep moving forward with the streets, that's a solid plan, I think, for this fiscal year. But we will need that long-term, this is how many years it's going to take to resurface every street, turn over, turn it all over again, right? What is that number?
Write this down.
But we also know that next year, the fire tax is going to be 7.5%, right? So we're just kicking the can and taking money from paid parking instead of doing what we know we eventually are going to need to do. So it's kind of an ease.
Unless you see growth.
Yes.
Unless there's growth. All right. When you actually run numbers, work our magic. We have the flexibility. We're going to agree to support the budget and the firefighters. It just depends on how we do it.
It's all right. I agree.
And at the end, that doesn't matter.
Yep.
Because people's lives are at stake. We have an agreement on the big thing, and the rest of this budget at zero tax is impressive. So you have things.
To be able to pull it off two years straight is very impressive.
Yes, in this economy.
In this economy. No other town's doing that.
I would venture to say that's accurate. Good job, council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine and Helen.
We need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
I thought I'd throw it in there.